Seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call the Pelham School Committee meeting to order at 6:30 PM.
Okay. So our first item is to approve regional and um clerical and para merit awards. Do we have a list?
If you scroll, oh.
Why is this not? Oh yeah. I.
It shouldn't have to be.
I literally moments ago sort of um added the the names to the list.
Well, I'm unable to.
You're still needing one more.
Well, you.
Right, but both of these said, both of these say meeting opening, which is not.
Close and open it again.
Yeah, because mine doesn't have that.
Oh, mine does.
No, mine has this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We gotcha.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
I think, I think my connection to the wifi was suspect, so.
This one.
There we go. That happens to me all the time. You just have to keep trying over and over again.
There's the list of names.
Thank you.
What's more worth feeling here?
Oh, there we go, okay. I'll look up there, it's bigger. Thank you.
Much better, okay. So if you'd like, I can start on this.
Yes.
So merit awards, so we we have, and I listed the Amherst Award winners as well here, just because it was easier in the minute I had before I put this up, before coming over. Even though by virtue of a bit of a scheduling struggle, we didn't get the Amherst meeting posted in time, that was, you know, the town, once a year closes, maybe twice a year closes at noon to do something for the staff in the town hall, and well, last Friday was that time, so we didn't get the Amherst meeting posted. Nonetheless, we have here for you the Paraeducator Merit Awardees for Amherst Pelham and Region. That's a new award this year that was negotiated in the contract that we we ratified earlier in the year. We have had also a clerical merit award for a number of years, and those awardees are also here. And so, you know, we're really thankful for all of these people and the work that they do for our district and the tremendous efforts that they make on behalf of kids. And we, you know, the the interesting thing with the Paraeducator Merit Awards, it was our first first time doing it, we had up to nine that we could give out, I think we got, I forget how many now, Debbie had the statistics on this, but you know, pretty strong response, which was nice. It's a way to, you know, acknowledge and and recognize some staff for for the work they do. And it's a tremendous opportunity to kind of share this with 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 you all and with the broader community about some of the folks that work in our district in in sometimes quieter ways or much less well-known ways. Similarly with our clerical awards, again, we've had this for a number of years, and yet it's still always an opportunity to thank those folks in a in a significant way here in public as to the efforts they make on behalf of the kids in our districts. And so I think that, you know, there are a couple of simple motions here to accept those those recipients. And there's a small cash award for all these folks as well. And I think it's one of the real joys of of Debbie's work to go through these and 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 share with with some of you who help on on the selection committee to to identify these award winners. But it's that sort of time of year that we get the opportunity to kind of thank people, so this is one of the ways we do that.
I don't think it's proper for us to vote the Amherst.
It's not, I I just left him in for the sake of simplicity, but we'll do that next time.
We'll add that to the agenda next week.
Yep. Yep.
It's great.
And I think it's going to be different motion, so you can just read the motion line and then the list of people, and that would be probably the way to do it.
Well, since Pelham's after Amherst, I would move to approve the Paraeducator Merit Award to Beata. Cecilska? Not sure how to pronounce that.
She goes, I miss Beata at school. Miss Beata at school.
All right, all right. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right. Thank you.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to say that I'm I'm the school committee member that's on the committee along with Debbie Westmoreland and Damani, who's going to be taking over for her, as well as an APA member, and we read all of the submissions and we met to discuss them, and it was wonderful. I mean, I think there were at least twenty nominations for para, sorry, twenty nominations for clerical and like thirty-four nominations for para. And it was so heartwarming, and many of the award winners and many of the nominees were nominated by more than one person. And there were some individuals who nominated themselves more than one person. It was just, it's it's the best subcommittee assignment, so thank you for giving me a subcommittee assignment. It's wonderful, because as you all probably know, we hear, we hear, often hear negative things about the district, and it's so wonderful to just be in a position to hear about all these wonderful things that are happening in our district, so I I really appreciate that. And I will move to approve the Paraeducator Merit Awardees for the region, Ahmed Berrios, Cieja, Crouch, and Violetta Hernandez.
Second.
All in favor? Excellent. Thank you.
And I will further move to approve the Clerical Merit Awardees for the region, Naidalia, Lozado, Lori Peterson, and Kristen Fadet.
Second.
Excellent. All in favor? These are fantastic, but not only, I can only imagine how fun it is to read all of those, but I love that we get to also like say thank you and just recognize what hard work, you know, all the grownups put in to the kids' experience, so thank you to everyone.
So, you want me to introduce this one as well?
Sure.
So, one of the sort of four areas that school committees have is the approval of the certain positions in the district, so they hire a superintendent, but they approve the Student Services Director, Finance Director, or Business Official. And the Assistant Superintendent if that position is filled. And so we have, and I think I've told you about this a while ago, and we haven't done the formal sort of step, which, so Doreen Reed has accepted the position to take over for favor when she retires, so Doreen is going to be in that position. And so this gives you the opportunity to formally adopt Doreen as our our Student Services Director, which is a title that actually comes as special education, which is a specific task the school committee has, but it's a broader set of responsibilities that that she will carry with this. Again, I put the Amherst one on there, it'll carry over to next time when Amherst meets next week, but there are, there are two motions there for for you guys to to approve that that position placement.
So I would.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to appoint Doreen Reed, Student Director of Services for the Pelham Elementary School.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
I guess I'll make another motion to approve the appointment of Doreen Reed as Student Director of Services for the Amherst Pelham Regional School District.
Second.
Is that you, Anna?
Yeah.
All in favor? Excellent.
Can I ask you a question? So Doug, and when I, whenever I read about the list of positions that the school committee is supposed to approve, it it also says nurses and doctors, as long as they're not employees of the Department of Health, which I don't believe ours are, but I don't think I've ever heard of a school committee, I don't think we have doctors, I don't think I've ever heard of a school committee appointing a nurse, and surely we've hired one. Do you happen to know? Or.
I've never seen that as something you guys have to approve. I mean, a doctor I can understand, but a nurse I find really quite odd, because to to be a nurse, that's a teaching position, it's in our teaching unit, but it requires a state license, and so, you know, we go through the regular process, but.
You can talk offline, I'll send you what I've seen.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, I'm not, I've seen the others, I haven't seen that one, but that could be buried somewhere in in, and it may be, we need to do that. Never seen it, but I don't have all knowledge of all things, for sure.
No? Here's. Okay. So next up is Superintendent's presentation of artifacts for evaluation.
So I'll keep this this fairly brief, let me open this up, actually, I, so I will admit, and hopefully Ms. Westmoreland's been out of the office the last two days, and so that's why some of these things got posted literally five minutes ago, because I was like, oh wait, we haven't got those things attached to the agenda, which is oftentimes the kind of detail she'll chase down for us, so unfortunately, these things didn't get attached until recently, literally minutes ago. Nonetheless, there's a little introductory letter here and then in a series of of documents that are linked to this to this document, and you should be able to get to those, and hopefully you've received this a few days ago and have had opportunity to to look at it. You know, this is by, you know, as it as it describes in the in the cover letter, you know, it's not the exhaustive list of all things that have been done, and certainly I don't want to claim that I personally did all of this work all by myself, that's not the way it works. Most of this work is done by a whole group of people that that put together various components or or carry the lion's share of this, and so I want to be very clear and very appreciative of all that work, of all those staff. Some of that work is stuff that's that's not seen, you know, in hard documentation, but nonetheless is part and parcel of what makes our district run, and so we we were able to, a minute ago, with the Paraeducator Award and the Merit Award for Clerical, to to acknowledge a few of those staff that helped make this this operation run and run smoothly and run well. You know, the the things that end up in the sort of public realm are often where people have concerns or problems or issues or questions about the district, and there's a lot of really great stuff happening all the time. We get to Superintendent's report, I'll talk about a couple of those things, but but I did want to share this 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 document with you, we've laid it out with each of the goals and some some accompanying documentation that that sort of supports each of those goals. And then at the end, there are a few other documents that that Ms. Westmoreland helped compile and and some some notations about the work this year. And hopefully that'll be a good framing of of some of the things that have happened and and the work we've done collectively to try to move the district forward this year. And so I I will just share with you a couple of things from from each of those that I want to point out, some are more extensive, so things like in Goal One, there's a much more extensive list of of things we've done and actions we've taken and, you know, trainings we've done, et cetera, et cetera. And a series of of artifacts that accompany that, and and hopefully will will give you a sense of of the efforts we've made, and and by no means is this exhaustive, there are other things that have happened in a much more subtle and and specific way at the building levels and and in in day-to-day operation and day-to-day work that our teachers and and faculty and and staff work with kids on a regular basis to connect and and each other and and have those conversations about how how we interact with one another and 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 work to support each other. In Goal Two, which is budget planning, there won't be anything in that set of artifacts that you haven't seen and probably spent a fair amount of time with over the last several months, so I doubt there's any real surprises or questions there. And so I think on Goal Three, though, one thing I will share, there's a, it it spoke a little bit to the regional agreement, and and looking at that, there were two things that I wanted to do with regard to the regional agreement, so it was relative to thinking about the sixth grade moving up to the middle school and sort of, is that an option to sort of include the Amherst sixth grade into the into the regional agreement or not? It's not really an option, so that I'll share with you for those of the region that haven't heard this conversation, whereas the Amherst School Committee has. And we we looked over sort of, there's some, you know, what the state often finds with regional agreements is that they were written a long time ago and they haven't always been regularly updated, and there's components that are missing or not quite in in order. I did check in with the state on some of that, we're actually not in too bad a shape, there's a few things we need to tidy up a little bit, nothing major, I mean, you know, I I think I would be remiss, the town councilors would would scold me if I didn't mention that we do need to change the wording relative to the Amherst Town Government, because the government changed in the last six years, and that would need to be updated. But that's, it doesn't functionally change the the agreement or how it works, and so I think it's still okay, even though it references like Select Board, even though it's Town Council and Select Boards. But there are a few things we could do relative to that, I think that the other thing I will say, you know, just talking about sixth grade moving to the middle school, there's a lot of planning that needs to happen around that, and it does impact and have interaction with the with the region, and it will be, you know, an ongoing bit of planning work that we're going to do over the next couple of years as we work through this. The short story is we can't add, well, I shouldn't speak in such absolutes. Adding a single town for a single grade to the regional agreement is extraordinarily complicated and difficult, and the lens that the the Department of Developmentary and Secondary Education takes is is one of, does this have a positive impact on all the kids? You know, is it equitable, does it improve educational outcomes, that's the sort of lens that they bring to it. To make that kind of addition to the regional agreement with, in this format of a single grade level for a a single dis- a single town would require special legislation. There's one other district that they could quote that has that, but it's really, it's a different circumstance. And it and it is a circumstance different from this, and it also benefited those those students to to do that, to have special legislation, so it's it's technically difficult to do and not one that is likely to get much support from from the from the Department of Developmentary and Secondary Ed, because it doesn't really necessarily provide better educational outcomes for all, and so that's a lens they'll take to it. That being said, you know, might we have conversations about regional agreements in the future? Absolutely, that's a, that's an ongoing, I think, thing we all should look at and and think about, and and if we were to come into a deeper conversation about that over the coming years, you know, we'll know, we'll have to fine tune a few pieces of our our regional agreement. But nonetheless, there are a couple of things there that I shared, more of that is for the Amherst folks, but but there are some things that also play into to the regional the regional review of of the artifacts as well. In Goal Four, which is really highly focused on mathematics and and the mathematics curriculum, there's a ton of curriculum work we've done over the course of years, we've we've had a couple of different presentations at both the Regional School Committee and and the Elementary School Committees, I think the the I-rated curriculum is in its second year, I think we're really happy with the progress that that has been made, both in the implementation of that, but also the outcomes and results we're seeing. I think that, you know, the the faculty are are feeling more and more comfortable with it and and having a, you know, good success with it, so I think that is, you know, is is encouraging. Like I said, we have some other curricular initiatives that we're working on and chipping away at and, you know, and trying to do that at a pace that that will be manageable for everyone, and at the same time, you know, tend to those those we needs we have in in curriculum areas, and that's, you know, K to K to twelve, pre-K to twelve in that regard. And again, I want to, you know, really congratulate the the folks, you know, faculty that have been taking on, you know, new things and and integrating that into their day-to-day work, as well as those people in our our curriculum roles, Mary Kylie and and Stephanie. Now I'm showing a complete blank. I can't believe I just went blank on Stephanie's last name. I can see her face and I cannot think of her name, speaks to how tired I am this evening, but nonetheless, I'm really embarrassed by that, but nonetheless, they've done tremendous work for the district to kind of support the teachers, give them the materials they need, continue to provide information and and work with the state on on various initiatives that they have and leverage those things. At the secondary level, we've done a fair amount of of work, especially early this year, there was a a pretty strong initiative held by department heads at the secondary, but in concert with the curriculum leaders at the at the middle school to to, you know, do alignment work, seven to twelve regarding curriculum across all all areas. I think there were some areas that were much more aligned than others, and and there's some deep conversations, particularly around math, around how we, you know, approach and and think about algebra in eighth grade, how we select kids for that, how we map kids through the various choices that they have, how to how to be thoughtful and give kids the best opportunity for success, whatever that might be in mathematics, but I think they've also, you know, spent a fair amount of time looking at other areas and other curriculum as well to to align that sort of coherent sort of approach to 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 academics in in the regional district. This primarily, like I said, focuses on 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 mathematics, but nonetheless, there's been work in in that area and across all all subjects in the secondary level. The last thing I'll talk about is some other things that we put together for you, there's a number of things we could do here, we've we've reinvested in professional development work and a professional professional development committee to have conversations about that, put some materials together for teachers to. put some materials together for teachers to, you know, understand and guide them through the work they need to do to get, renew or enhance their licensure, also just generally improve their practice. As we talked about this spring, we've talked about this Student Opportunity Act planning that we've done. We'll do some more deeper dive in that over the next coming, you know, over the next year or so. But that's a start. There's a lot of things there that we could do more on. But nonetheless, that's, you know, a level of work we've done to dig into that need and to, you know, sort of meet the requirement of the state, but also to think about some initial steps in what would be a deeper district improvement planning process that we'll probably undertake in the short term. Obviously, for Amherst, we've got a construction project, but it has impact on our third two districts as well. So that's part of why a traffic pattern is pretty important because, you know, anybody that either drives to, you know, any of the schools that has to, you know, work their way through that construction zone and navigate that twice a day, it's important we communicate well and hopefully we did a good job. I've not heard much as far as pushback on that. So I think our planning around that for both the school itself, but then also its impact on pedagogy and its impact on the regional schools. Hopefully, we've done a good job and we're not seeing huge amounts of backup there. But it's an indication of other work we're doing in a sort of facilities way to make sure that we're attending to things as best we can while we do improvements in our districts. And then the last thing on here, and this is, you know, just an indication of there's, you know, this is one piece of things that we're working with that come up and are part and parcel of, you know, the work this year. And we'll be continuing work as we go through the next couple of years. The impacts of what was happening about a year ago and the fallout in some respects of that is something we continue to have to work through. And some of that's, you know, in goal one, where we talk about sort of how we're approaching, making sure we're creating a welcoming and, you know, space for all students and all staff and create an environment where everyone can have success. And it also has this sort of other side where, as we took various personal actions and looked at ourselves closely and took into account the things that transpired last year, that, you know, we have some residual complicating factors that we have to work through. And they take a long, long time, and so we're still in process on those. And so I think, you know, it's just a mention of the work that's in that area and that we'll continue to have in that area. So I didn't want to leave that out and it can kind of disappear from your mind because it's not something that, because it's so personnel-related a lot of times and, you know, it's not things we can discuss publicly, so we don't. And it can be kind of forgotten that there's time and attention that needs to go to that. And I'm not the only staff that have to spend time and effort on those things. And so I wanted to acknowledge that there's some work there and some continuing work there, and there will be for a while as we work our way through that. So I think I'll stop there and see if people have any questions. And, you know, this is, you know, pre-review, obviously. If there's, hopefully this gives you some sense of, you know, the things that we've done this year and give you some information that you can use to help as you think through the structure of the state's evaluation process. So there's, you know, some parts of it that are just standards-based. So you can think about other things we've talked about over the course of year or things you've seen or heard or whatever as far as the four standards and the particular indicators within those standards. But then also, in the performance section, you can look more specifically at these goals and what progress we've made on some of that. And some progress we haven't made. There's some, you know, I'll fully admit, there's some things I wish we'd done better and could do better and would like to do better. And, you know, we're still, even, you know, today, we're having conversations about how to get better at that work and how do we keep trying to improve the circumstance and experience for all the kids in all the buildings. So I'm happy to answer any questions people have.
Sarah?
Thank you. I have a few questions, but I'll just start with goal one. And then maybe Sarah Bess, you want to go one goal at a time? I don't know. All right. And this isn't meant to challenge you at all, but I'm curious because you've been the interim superintendent since, I think, August 31st, maybe, but you were also the acting superintendent for a couple of months earlier in the summer. So a lot of the artifacts you presented for the first goal was work that happened in August, in the in-between time when you were not the superintendent. So I wonder if you can say what role, if any, you had in planning or arranging for all that to happen? I mean, you said at the outset that this, you know, many people, it's not all you, it's many people. But I'm curious as to how you yourself have advanced this work.
Yeah, I think there was a fair amount of this that was outlined by the previous superintendent. You know, he was able to return from a medical leave in mid-July. And in the course of that, about six or seven weeks that he had before he left, you know, he really invested deeply in sort of connecting with people and plugging into the sort of needs that we had and trying to do some forethought and planning with regard to this. But he also worked closely with, you know, our family center director, our student services director, so Marta Guevara, and Fay Brady, and our human resources staff, and thought about this deeply and outlined, you know, and also with some of the community. And he sort of, you know, got some feedback from folk and put together a pretty solid plan of action with that regard. I think in a lot of ways, there's a fair amount of this that was, for me, was much more about supporting and keeping it moving forward and continuing to promote the need to do this work and trying to, you know, kind of keep those circumstances in place that allowed for this to happen in some respects. There is a, you know, a good chunk of that that was, yeah, others' work, to be perfectly honest. And that's true across all of these, actually. So, you know, this is not different from that. And I think that also, we've tried to continue to look into, be aware of, and especially, you know, we did a fairly intensive amount of training on, in November, when we had our curriculum, not our curriculum, but our professional development day, you know, sometimes called a teacher work day. You know, we really tried to encourage as many staff as possible to be a part of that. We've continued to have those conversations and to, you know, promote that effort. So it's much more a supportive role for me in a lot of ways on this. And I think it also speaks to the strength and efforts of, you know, other directors and coordinators at the district level that help kind of support and carry this work forward, too.
Sarah, did you have a follow-up or?
Well, I have questions related to other goals.
Okay. Are there any more goal one clarifying questions?
So I'm curious whether there were ongoing after the November professional development day, whether there were any formal or informal work being done with staff and, you know, teachers about these issues?
I think with staff, you know, there's a certain amount of this. It's about setting an expectation that, you know, afford staff to be able to have difficult conversations or to point things out to each other. I don't know that we necessarily had. Building levels may have had some specific related work. I think there were. I can't recall explicitly which buildings necessarily. I know some buildings have done some additional work in their own professional development time, their own faculty meeting time. I think in the classroom level, you know, particularly at the elementary, the integration of restorative circles and restorative aspects gave them opportunity to have conversations about, you know, these topics, but then also other sort of bias and harassment kind of questions. So I think there's, that's been a part of their work for a while. And so this was, you know, another lens to bring to bear on that and on those kinds of conversations they had. I think more of the work, you know, in the course of the year was building-led and probably driven by needs particular to the buildings.
Thank you. Yep, William, and then?
I noticed that on one of the artifacts for goal one was the gender support plan by gender spectrum. I didn't realize that that was something we were doing. Is that something they were doing correctly?
So we made that available to staff to use if a kid, you know, came forward with that. I mean, that gave us a frame of reference to, you know, to think about what are the kind of questions we need to think through with them. You know, and so I think it was helpful in that regard. It was some of the materials that were shared with us and that we used. You know, we didn't create our own version of that. And at the same time, I think that if there were circumstances, that was an opportunity to leverage that tool to kind of work through that. Did we formally, like, fill it out? I don't know that I've seen one filled out, but I think we used it.
It's a great tool.
Yeah.
I just didn't realize it was being implemented in the school. So that was just my question. Is it being implemented or is it just?
Yeah, I think we made it available for folks to use. And it wasn't a directive as much as it was, here's a real resource. I think people recognized the value of that resource and so leveraged it to what they felt was appropriate for a given kid at a given age and development level. So I think it was, you know, there's some things were much more directive about this. We were probably less so that way, but I think it was a great resource and I think people leaned into that resource.
Yeah, so first thing, just thank you, Doug. This is a tremendous amount of work. And I think we all recognize, like, that you really, you know, let yourself be tagged in a really difficult moment for the district. So I want to put anything I say next in that context. I did share Sarah Marshall's concern that really the artifacts for goal one show a lot of just following the Mike Morris plan. And I know some of us on school committee felt frustrated throughout the year when we'd ask questions related to the goal. Like, it was unclear of it being an ongoing focus and priority outside the family meetings. And so I appreciate, like, if many staff were working on it. But I just think, like, in terms of communication back to this body, that we could be stronger in that regard. And also within goal one, I just noticed on the bullying report plan, like, the bullying report data, that the in-process number, you provided us this document several times, and that in-process number stays consistently high, which just makes me worry about the turnaround time on it and the pace of it. And then just like as a personal thing that I'd be interested in, like, what's the pathways then for the ones that are not bullying or harassment? Like, there may still be disciplinary pathways there or accountability pathways of some sort. So all that's just of interest to me.
Right. So I think that there is a grid that you've seen throughout the year that sort of has the numbers for, and it's dated the 28th of May. I will say this, you know, the two that look the highest were, of course, the high school and middle school. High school had like six. That, I think, is now at zero as far as in-process. I think some of those were duplicates. We've had some struggles with technology this year, which hasn't helped us at all. It's impeded progress. It's been difficult sometimes for people to submit. I think it's also, it's been, you know, problematic to work with as well. I would say at the middle school, it's showing a number like nine. That's, it's not zero yet. It's in-process. We're trying to, you know, we're battling a few different things, technology being one of them. I think some work's being done offline at this point, quite frankly, to do that. And I think that there is some of that that's more finished than not. We are going to, you know, work to resolve those fully. So I'll say that. Number two, I think I will fully admit, this is one area that I'm, I've personally been frustrated about. And I think there are several staff that have been. And I think that, you know, and frustrated on a number of different levels. Not because, you know, people are slacking off or not doing their work or whatever. It's just we have not made as much progress about being as timely with some of these as we really, we really need to be. I think there are oftentimes actions taken and sometimes it's a matter of, you know, documenting that work. And I think we could just do better about the actions we need to take as far as the immediacy of it and being a little more in the moment with it. I think there are a lot, a lot of times there are things that are happening and we've got to get back and sort of record what we've done. And that will guarantee and, you know, sort of, it'll demonstrate the efforts that people are making. But I would also say, I think we could be a lot better. And I think we can be a whole lot better at getting and attending to these in more timely ways. I think it's been difficult, you know, having a principal spread across two buildings. I think we've had some, you know, we've had some challenges with staffing, some new staffing in some of the areas that deal with this in a pretty critical way. And, you know, for all the things that, you know, give some reason as to why we haven't been on top of this, it still doesn't excuse the need to really be on top of this as much and as well as we have and should be. I think we've been better and yet not good enough, would be one way I'd describe it. The other thing I will say is this, is, and this is, we try to share this with everybody. And this is really true, you know, sort of regardless of sort of any type of conflict or disciplinary question that arises, and particularly in these kinds of questions, is that, you know, there's this sort of technical aspect of whether something is or isn't bullying or not. But regardless of whether it's officially, you know, meets the requirements of the definition by state law, et cetera, et cetera, there are consequences. There are actionable steps that are taken with kids in regard to dealing with these circumstances. So even in a circumstance where, you know, people are invested in their not being bullying or their being bullying, depending on which sort of side of this and what you think and your perceptions of this, I think the key thing to really remember sort of at the core of this is we're trying to find and identify and take action relative to what's appropriate for those students, to either support them, change behavior, understand behavior, all those different components, and it's very specific to all the students. So we do have action and consequence relative to those and scaled appropriately for any given individual student, whether they're on the sort of receiving or perpetrating end of some sort of conflict like this. And whether it's a bullying circumstance or not, we try to take that approach relative to how we deal with discipline and behavior. You know, the number of things we have for actual disciplinary things we can do is very small. What we're much more focused on is what is the right behavior? How can we teach better behaviors? How can we do repair work with folks and get them to have, you know, meaningful conversations and thoughtfulness as they make decisions in the future, that kind of thing? So I think even, you know, regardless of outcome on a, on this sort of spreadsheet, I think that the thing to know is that we're invested in all the kids that are involved and the adults involved to make sure we're doing better by everyone as best we can. We kind of keep working on that. That's part of the work of the district in and around that. But I will say, you know, there's a lot of room for improvement here. I think we could be a lot better at that. I'm hoping that as we get a little more stable in our staffing over the coming year, we'll be better able to do that work. You know, I think we improved a little bit this year, and I think we've got a long way to go. And we've got some efforts we need to still make there.
William?
So it says on goal one, modify the online bullying reporting system to allow for the reporting of harassment concerns. I feel that harassment was just added to the form, but in the form, there's not a place to talk about harassment. And then bullying and harassment, as a person who has received reports back, it just says, no found of bullying. They never really talk about the harassment piece. And so when we have the data that comes to us on the bullying harassment data, it just has bullying harassment. It says seven? That's really not accurate because it's just bullying seven and not bullying 15. There's no, there should be a separate column for harassment. And I have never seen a bully form that's been turned around to say it's not bullying, but was harassment. I've only seen it say, no bullying. But I could be wrong because that's my limited view.
Right. And I think that's an area where, again, where I think some more improvement in that is warranted. I think that, you know, one of the things that, and again, I think our, you know, our technology wasn't helpful in that regard this year because I think we would like to have refined it a little bit more during the year, but we were just struggling with it to function well at times. And so that kind of limited us a little bit. But I think that that idea of adding harassment as a choice and then have the narrative and then investigate that. And some of the, you know, one of the conversations we're having with our legal counsel a little bit about process is that if you're in, you know, whether you're in like a Title IX or a Title VI or some other kind of harassment category, the steps you take are a little different than you would in the bullying. And so what happens if it's both? And, you know, there's a few different decision trees you have to sort of follow and set up. And so, you know, that's, that is certainly an area of improvement, I think. And I think we've continued to lean on it mostly in forms of bullying. I think if there were circumstances of harassment, I think we probably pulled that and investigated separately, which of course then doesn't show up on the reports the way you would want it to. We are looking at some different tools to capture this data a little differently. So we're hoping to be a little more nuanced as we move ahead because I think we've got similar concerns about what we capture. because I think we've got similar concerns about what we capture and not captured and and how we capture it. And and also, you know, if we, if we capture, it then can lead our our staff in the right direction as far as next steps. You know, what are the right next steps we have to take and help us with with the sort of workflow that we need to go through that and, yeah, I think that's that's certainly an area that that is an area of 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 need and continuing improvement we need to do here for for sure.
I was, it's kind of related to that same question, asking about the difference between bullying and harassment and then just being a little bit surprised at the small percentage of cases where bullying or harassment. And now it seems like it's just bullying that was found to be occurring in these. So of the, seven of the twenty-eight were found to be actual cases of bullying. And fifteen were either not nothing or not harassment or bullying or just not bullying, it's not totally clear. And so I was just, you know, trying to get my, wrap my head around why so many cases were deemed not. And what are the other reports then? Are they just kids reporting stuff that wasn't true? Are they reports of kids that are reporting really minor incidents that don't really amount to what an adult would classify as actual harassment? Or is harassment and bullying, or is bullying a very strict definition and harassment only counted towards?
Or or even, you know, behavior modification stuff we're working on kids and and teaching that we're doing with kids in and around that. So just because it wasn't found to be doesn't mean there weren't, there were more than likely consequences, you know. You know, do we find sometimes that that stuff gets filled out and it it's fiction? Yeah, that happens, that's a very small amount of cases. If we have other circumstances that arise that don't get reported onto this system, obviously we have a, we we have a system, a tool we use called Educator's Handbook, which is about recording those kind of things and more often that's driven by teacher entry into that, students can't enter into that. So staff entering particulars about a circumstance, it may be things that, you know, an individual teacher experiences in their classroom or they saw in the hallway. But it may also be, you know, some of our our staff that are more specifically tasked with disciplinary behavior work and they may have recorded something as well. So if there's, you know, a fight between two kids, that may never make it into, you know, while what may have instigated was some conversation that could be considered bullying, there's a good chance that never hits the bullying sort of report because it's it's, you know, because the fight's the primary thing and, you know, and and when they unpack that with kids, you know, they're they're, you know, figuring out the sort of component pieces of that. We are as staff, obviously, if we think there's a bullying component of that, supposed to go in and and enter that in just like, you know, a student might self-report or a parent might report. And there may be some of those in amongst that as well and those may have been still found to be not bullying in a formal sense and there's still some action taken there. But there's a fair amount of, you know, that's one piece of sort of discipline behavior that we're looking at. So there's a whole host of other work that we're doing and recording and and communicating amongst ourselves around discipline and behavior that are not in these statistics at all. But we do and are interested and concerned about and thinking about what are what are consequences, what are ones that matters? Are we are we changing behavior, are kids making better decisions, are we creating environments that allow for success, are we protecting kids and safety plans? So a whole host of things we're doing in and around that that aren't in that sort of specific category. I think also, given our recent history, the likelihood we have a higher reporting level is not surprising. And that's okay and, you know, and maybe they aren't bullying and that doesn't mean they shouldn't have been reported in using that tool, so that's perfectly fine too. You know, and I think that that's, you know, oh, you know, several years ago when 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 Phoebe, and I'm drawing a blank on her name, that actually brought the bullying law, but she had self-harm. And so we had an uptick in the amount of self-harm that was reported or potential, and and districts across the Commonwealth saw that. Where where, you know, the news influences the kids and what they think about and how they frame their thoughts and and the adults as well. And so, you know, we have a lens on that and and so, yeah, we're in a in a state of heightened awareness and so I think we've got more reporting, that's fine. And we'll do the work around it and we got to get better at doing that work and and, you know, at some point it'll it'll moderate a little bit, I think. But, you know, we're we're definitely interested, we want people to report, so, you know, it's fine if they do. I don't think I'll, hopefully I got to most of what you were asking about.
All right, goal, any, do you have goal two question? Yep, any further questions?
About one or any?
Uh, I guess any, I'd like to move on from one.
Yes.
Okay, yep.
So goal three, the sixth grade move, so you spoke about that a bit already. I wanted, can't find it here, did, I I'm not clear on whether you have learned whether the district agree, the regional agreement needs aside from the rent, like we work out what a rent is, does anything about the agreement need to be changed to allow the sixth grade to be there? I understand that the the agreement is old and it's, you know, needs updating for other reasons, but do you think there's anything in the agreement that has to be taken care of for this move to happen?
No, you know, in chatting with the with the state and and they're interested, I mean, they're, they made no indications of any formal things we'd absolutely have to address in the regional agreement. I think there are, they're certainly very interested in sort of what our plans are and how we're going to do it and how we're going to make this all work. But as far as mechanics of the agreement, I think it's fine.
Uh, any further questions?
I just wanted on goal two, related to the budget, again, thank you for laying that all out there. I see that you put nineteen meetings, but I know that you in your list didn't include BCG meetings that I also saw you at, so the amount of meetings has really been intense. Yeah, um, what I had to say on it specifically is just probably not backwards looking as much as forward looking in terms of as we go into the next year, I think we're going to need year-round budget planning with the school committee so that we can have input on, you know, on the budget plans with the upcoming shortfall that we're predicting for fiscal year or academic academic year, really. Twenty-five, twenty-six, so I think that's just forward looking.
Yeah, there's no doubt, you know, and I think that that, you know, sort of one of the other fortunate things about hiring superintendents and I can kind of step back into the role of of finance directors full-time and and, you know, you know, what's not listed here is all the other meetings that we have to to have conversations about, you know, personnel and staffing and what we need and what's our our expectation of of need in in various areas and and some of those are ongoing still as we sort of work through the final parts of this year and thinking about next year. But certainly, you know, starting early is never a bad thing. And and particularly when we know and and are anticipating, you know, a difficult financial circumstance in in the coming, in the coming months. And so I think that's part of why, not to, you know, sort of steal the headline, but, you know, there's a agenda topic and a couple bullets that we'll we'll come back to and and have a little bit of that conversation. I will say this with the, the, you know, the budget and audit subcommittee, you know, in previous years, you know, there were, there were conversations and meetings we were having about how to how to best communicate to the public broadly about the about the budget, how to understand it for each of the districts. It's it's a fairly complex, you know, you know, combination of 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 information and and it's difficult to explain that simply. I mean, there's aspects that are fairly straightforward and then other things that are much more nuanced and and it's important to have a rich conversation with the public about what they care about, what they want and what we can, what we have for for resources and and what actionable steps and when to take those actionable steps. I mean, one thing I will share, you know, with you guys that you kind of know, but, you know, the, you know, if 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 we want to make significant changes in what we're planning for a coming year, we really have to make pretty significant conversations and impressions and and forecasting, you know, in that November, December, January timeframe. Because once we get to February, it's it's kind of the sprint to the finish and it doesn't seem like, well, it's two months, you got to vote in, you know, in in March. But but to make any sort of significant shifts at that point are really tricky to do. And sometimes we have to by virtue of, you know, we think the governor's budget's X and it becomes Y and we're like, oh, that's good news or oh, that's horrible news or whatever. But but if we're, you know, when we're thinking about, you know, sort of planning and and being perspective about what we're trying to do and and initiatives and that sort of stuff, those are conversations we want to have in that, you know, fall and and winter. Because we we need to think about what's what's the staffing associated, what are materials needed, what are the costs associated at best we can guess and plan that as early as we can.
Thank you, Sarah?
I have a question about, or two, about the goal four and the artifacts regarding the math curriculum. I saw somewhere, I don't see it right now, that there is a new grade eight elective, but I didn't see the name of it anywhere and I don't think it's in the flow chart. Different paths.
Yeah.
So and and I don't think it was, or maybe it doesn't need to be presented to the committee, but I don't recall hearing.
So I think, I I don't know, you know, unfortunately that memo that is laid out isn't dated. So I don't know if it's something more really specific, really recently, which I kind of think it is. But I, and and I think that may be why it's not in that flow chart. So I got to check back with with Mary Kyla a little bit about that one to kind of get a sense of that because it is one of those where if we're going to offer another class, it really is something that the committee needs to approve. You know, more often you see things like the high school comes, oh, we're going to teach this class and da-da-da. And so we we would want to bring that to you guys for for review and approval. I think that memo though does, you know, sort of lay out the case and the logic behind it, but I think it it is. And it may be that it's such that it's set separate from the flow chart, in other words, it's it's augmentative and so it's not as far as sort of getting through to whatever endpoints, that may be why it's not in the flow chart. But but certainly have to kind of cycle back with with Mary on that and if, and and bring that to committee if we need to formally vote that.
And is it, so it's probably not being offered next year since we haven't heard about it or?
I got to double check.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not, I I, you know, I think it's really sort of that new and and given, no, I don't want to comment, I don't, I don't know a hundred percent. Well, I'll have to check and get a little detail and kind of kind of come back to you on that.
And for goal four, a lot of the artifacts described qualitative improvements and the goals of the the math curriculum. Are there any statistics that you can point to that the curriculum achieves the goals that were set out in terms of achievement or?
Yeah, I think there was a presentation, I don't know if we did it, I think we might have done it at the middle school. It it was more noticeable at the elementary level with the I read it because it was more focused on on elementary. But there is some use of that to to at the secondary level, so I think at the secondary level is less of that. What we are seeing with it, just informationally for you in that regard is that the the growth we were seeing in the in the mid-year assessment was pretty significant and and very positive and so, you know, they were on track to really finish the year in a in a strong way. I haven't seen the numbers for the the final assessment, which they've probably been finishing up really recently. So I think that's encouraging and, you know, it being a second year, sort of, it's not the kind of first time through, so I think it's really indicative. You know, the kids are familiar with the, you know, how the how that curriculum works and so there's not, you know, a learning curve on how to, how does the stuff look online when I take this assessment? That's familiar to them, so it's really a true, a truer measure of of their of their work and knowledge. I think at the secondary level, we've been using that that common assessment, I I haven't heard how that's played out. But I'm I'm hopeful that the sort of carryover from the sixth grade into seventh is is kind of continuing to to support the kids and and but I can certainly, you know, kind of pose that question and get back to you.
Thank you.
Just really quickly on the math, I was noticing the pathways, you know, starting in eighth where the differentiation starts and then how it goes along different and I'd just be really interested in knowing as this comes back to us, what the sort of racial and different demographics are, how they align with that and what, whether this is increasing outcomes in that direction positively. One thing that I noticed even with my own son, it wasn't really clear to me when the decision was made that whether to double up or not. So he wasn't eligible for calculus, he did AP stats and I think it didn't hurt him overall in his college prospects, but one college didn't put him into the major he wanted in the sciences because of it and I think so. It's actually a very, you know, very important moment where people can get weeded out of STEM if they don't have those options open. So I just want to watch the the racial and other disparities according to that, even gender perhaps.
Yeah, and I I think one of the concerns, you know, and I think, I think it might have either been, not on the flow chart, but there was another one that had at the very bottom, like at the, not at the very end of the document, it was like at the top of a a final page, it actually straddled two pages. It had a little bit of the demographic demographic breakdown currently, which is, you know, a little concerning. You know, there's some kids that aren't getting included in 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 some of that more advanced opportunities in mathematics. And and so I think that is known and and concerning, I think there's, you know, I think that's part of the rationale with with what Sarah asked earlier about this sort of augmentative kind of classes is that separation of of kids starts to happen in middle school. There's a lot of things that happen of kids as they hit middle school and there's developmental aspects to it and, you know, that sort of thing. And, you know, making sure we continue to support kids and and provide as much opportunity to as many kids as possible to kind of keep them moving and being able to follow those different, those different options and opportunities is is a pretty important one for us. And I think a lot of districts struggle with how to how to do that well and so I, you know, we'll we'll keep looking at those stats. I mean, like if you looked at the ones that are in there, in there, you know, it it would be better if they were more reflective of our general student population and and they're not. And and so I think that, you know, there's, there is work to do there and and I think that that's, it's an interesting lens you you bring to that and in thinking about sort of as kids track through those, you know, are we continuing, you know, to 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 attend to that notion of who's in which ones and what what options that provides or or doesn't provide? So I'll share that with with the with our curriculum folks.
Thanks. All right. Any further questions on the artifacts? Fantastic.
Can you just say, just one other thing, you know, as you go through this, I mean, really, this is more about the evaluation as a whole. So, you know, some of it's about me, an individual, but it's more about the district as a whole and thinking about, you know, and and I do want reflection and feedback on all the different standards and all of that and and commentary about, you know, my work because that's helpful to me regardless of what role I have. And and it's also though very informative, and I said this before, it's very informative for the, for a new superintendent to kind of see things that are important to you, things that you think we're doing well, things that you think need improvement. This is an opportunity to, you know, reflect on what's happened, but also be a little perspective about what you, where you want to go, what you think's important. Some of that narrative that you write is going to give some lens to to that values that you you have either individually or as as a group or you're reflecting of your community. So I appreciate you taking the time, these things are a huge pain in the neck to do. I've done these kind of things in other roles I've had, they're difficult to do, they're difficult to do well and be thoughtful. So I appreciate the time and effort you're taking to do this, I think it's helpful to me, but it's also helpful to us as a whole, the district as well as as our new superintendent. So I want to thank you for that in advance. But also reach out at any time if you have other questions or there's something, you know, if you're looking at some standard like, oh, what about, I thought we did something? Don't hesitate to send me an email and say, oh, I was going to try to, I saw this and I was thinking about something we said six months ago or whatever it is. And I'm happy to answer answering questions that come up for you as you go through that.
Thank you, can I ask one question to the subcommittee? The evaluation subcommittee, I thought I remembered at one point there being that you can do it in multiple seat seating settings, so you can.
You email.
Sorry, words are hard today, that you can, you don't have to do it all at the same time, you can like come back to it.
Yeah.
Yes.
You should be able to.
Okay, that's excellent because I think previously that was not an option, so you had to like.
Do it all now.
I think it was.
Yeah, I I think it is, we think, we haven't tested it.
We could try.
I'm pretty sure I checked on the form.
You said it was.
You wrote that, you emailed us.
Yeah, you said you went back and checked. You sent it in return.
Yeah, it was fantastic.
I think it was the settings.
It was a setting.
She only had the settings, I don't.
Yeah.
But you also.
It is a setting and I clicked the setting that says you can come back and do it later.
I think that's fantastic.
Except not, except not after June eighteen.
Right.
You need to, like, you can't keep.
Right.
Yes, you know, yes.
That's fine, it just meant you didn't have to sit down and dedicate one.
You do not have to do it all at once or get logged out and then have to start over.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, but they are due a week from today.
And you should do multiple ones if you are involved with multiple districts.
Yes, you need to submit one for each school committee that you're. Yes, you need to submit one for each school committee that you're reporting for.
I love being on one.
You don't have to do this in elaborate?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a follow-up question, Sarah?
No.
Nope, okay, great.
I moved to it during the Pelham School Committee meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? All righty.
You voted no, she'd have to stay here.
I can't vote.
She can't vote.
I can't vote.
It gets confusing sometimes.
I cannot vote on that one.
All right, I will go home and check you all out online.
If you could, you would have to fill out two forms.
I would have to fill out.
And move.
And move. It could be a high price.
Excellent. Okay, so chairs.
There's an open chair.
Update, I don't think I have one. Besides, I want to hijack a little of the, of the superintendent's update. And if you haven't gone or if you have a chance to go to the art display that's at Amherst College, it is absolutely amazing. Our kids collectively are, they, it's, they're breathtaking. Like, some, they're, they're just fantastic. And it's so nice to see them all on display like that because you don't get to see all of those things. And even I have a kid that has some stuff in there, you don't even get them at home. Like, sometimes you get like a crumpled pile at the end of the year and you're like, that would have been really pretty. Now it's recycling. But, so if you have a chance to go, it's, it's, it's so lovely. So, and, sorry.
That's okay.
I jacked it, I had to.
That's okay. I'll still repeat it.
Perfect. Are there any school committee announcements, Sarah?
I would have sworn I emailed people, but I can't find a sent email. So I just want to say that the negotiating teams for the district and our food service workers, I'm your district representative, school committee representative, have reached an agreement on a new three-year contract. The committee, we were all ready to have the chairs sign the contract, and then we thought, oh, the committees actually need to vote on them. So Amherst, we will do that next week. And.
We'll have it to our next meeting.
Pelham and region will do it, yeah.
Great, thank you. Jennifer?
The, I'm the representative on the AFSMI bargaining team, and we are continuing to bargain with AFSMI team. And our next meeting is Friday.
William?
I was just going to say that tomorrow is the welcoming school celebration at the Crocker Farm preschool. So if any of the Amherst school committee members would like to go there, since it falls within their district, is tomorrow at 2:30. Or if anyone else wants to go and support their welcoming, they're the first school in the district to be a sealed welcoming school from a national nonprofit. So it's a pretty big deal that they're doing that tomorrow. So just wanted to give a shout out to Crocker Farm preschool.
Did you ever hear the feedback coming?
So I'm one of the representatives to the collaborative fund educational services that we use for some of the professional development functions. And they have their regular board meetings. At the last one, they reported some challenges meeting this year's budget. And they implemented some cost cutting for next year. I, I wanted to point out that that's an interesting side effect of many school districts not having enough money to purchase services from them. And they're concerned about, you know, rightfully about next year with, you know, budgets getting tighter about what, what they, how much demand there will be for services. Nothing for us to worry about, but I, I just wanted to point this out as a, you know, a connection to all the school budget discussions that we're having.
Any further announcements? Any more subcommittee updates? Great. Warrant report?
Oh, yes. Let me pull that up. I don't think I have that many. I say that, sorry. Should be at least two because I've been paid twice since the last time we met. Oh, hold on. This one's not opening. There it is.
I, William Scher, authorized by my signature to the high school student activities transfer in the amount of $14,867.56 for the high school transfer dated 5/30/24. Sorry, I actually exited my email instead of just closing the one window. That's the same one.
I, William Scher, on 5/29/2024, authorized by my signature in the payable amounts of $937,625.74. General fund expenses of $932,358.74. Revolving fund expenses of $5,000. Entailings of $267. On 5/28/2024, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $610,593.68. General fund expenses of $541,756.8. Revolving fund expenses of $33,761.40. Grant fund expenses of $33,820.71. And gifts of $1,255.49. I, William Scher, authorized by my signature to the scholarship warrant in the amount of $7,550 dated June 3, 2024. On 6/5/2024, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature in payables in the amount of $34,264.77. Includes general fund expenses of $19,863.67. Revolving fund expenses of $8,040. Gifts of $5,360. Entailings at $1,001.10. And I, William Scher, authorized by my signature in the amount of $897,071.46. And that was for payroll, sorry. The payroll ones always look different than the warning. And that is the last one.
Excellent, thank you. I don't believe we have any gifts. I also received zero public comment. Weird, I know. Okay. So, you and continuing business are FY '22 and FY '23 audit review.
So I was hoping for fiscal '23 to be here. It's not quite done yet. So I was, we're, we're close to finishing the fiscal '23. I don't think there's any issues with it. It's really about getting the final reports from, from our auditors on, on fiscal '23. We do have the fiscal '22. Got a little off-cycle over the last little bit, which is why '22 is so late. We've actually had '22 for a few months. We were like, well, we'll just wait and get the '23 and we'll do them both together and that sort of thing. But, so there's three of them here. So the regional school district being, and, you know, in a financially independent entity has, has three different audits that we, we do. So the primary one is the financial statement. So the one that has the FS '22-dash-final as the last little bit is the financial statement. That's a broad audit of our financials for the entire district in the sort of classic sense with, with an auditor. So that's, that's this one here, which I can open and, and share with you. So there's this, the financial statements. Because the regional school district has federal grants in excess of $750,000, we're also required to do what's called a single audit, which is what this is. You know, it's going on our standards, but it, it's sometimes called a single audit review or a single audit. It's a similar idea, but it's specifically focused on sort of our process procedures around our grants, our federal grants in particular. And then the third one you have here is the end-of-year report. So we're required by the state Department of Education and Transsecondary Education to file an end-of-year report, which is an accounting of every dollar spent by the district. So grant money, gifts, revolving funds, appropriated monies, the whole kit and caboodle in all the different categories. And so they ask for that information in a number of different ways. Sometimes they ask for the same data kind of with different lenses. And nonetheless, they are then required, we are then required to have our end-of-year report audited annually as well. I will share that for the Pelham district, this is a side note for your Pelham folks. Because it's so small, the end-of-year report only needs to be audited every three years. So that's just an FYI, a little sidebar. And for Amherst, the audit is a part of the town's audit. So mostly what you see is the end-of-year report. That's the one specifically for us. If you want to know sort of how the financials of that works, the town audit has the schools included because we're one of the departments of the town. But for the region, being an independent financial entity, we have the full set. And so, you know, I kind of joke when I look at these that there's a lot of what they're writing to us is, is telling us what they don't do in the audit as opposed to what they do in the audit. But what they do is, is based on accounting standards and process and procedure that's very formally set up and, and standards both at the state level and the national level, there's a review of things. It is not exhaustive review of every single transaction by any stretch of the imagination. It is a review of all of those processes, procedures, a sampling of different things from each of our different component parts of our, our financial system to understand whether or not on our financial statement, whether that truly reflects what our financials are. They look in, in for our grants in the single audit. They're looking again for our, is that representative of, of, of a true financial picture of what occurred and what we're reporting? Does that align with, with what we, we have? And then for the end-of-year report, it's, it's the same sort of thing with a little different lens. It's again lining up with the state report on, on meeting the requirements of that. The end-of-year report of the state, they, they want you to report things in categories, you know, sort of educational spending categories. So they want to know protectional development from money you spend on athletics versus special education. And in special education, it'll depend on what's called a level of need or the severity of the, of the disability of kids and how you spent the money, what you spent on transportation and, and all those different sort of factors. So it's a much more detailed analysis. And how we set up our accounts is, is to some extent to parallel that system. It would be nice to be a little more parallel with the state system, but we have to do a little crosswalking between those. But I think as you look through these, the first thing that you want to kind of note is are there any findings? So findings is an official sort of term. When, when they have a finding, and, and the way to think of audits as well, I think is it's kind of like an evaluation. It's a way to see if your processes are good, is your, is your work good? Are your process procedures in good order? Are you following the process procedures? And if you're not, then what are the things you need to do to get better at what you do? So it's, it's an opportunity to learn and, and get better at the work. If we have findings, those are formal statements of weakness of some sort or, or a need of improvement. We would have then had a response with corrective actions. We'd be bringing those to you to talk about those in more detail because you're responsible for some of that oversight of us in that process. What you'll find in these three is that there's, there are no findings, which is, is good news. The end-of-year report's a little different format than it's been in the past. What's, what's notable about that is it has this sort of grid. And if you look at that results column, as long as you see procedure performed without exception, or it doesn't apply, that's a great sign. So, you know, not applicable, no amendments are required, right? So those are the kinds of things you're hoping to see, which means we've got decent policy and procedure and we're following it. And so what we're doing is, you know, it's not to say that everything's perfect. We got every penny in all the right places. I'm hoping we did, and given the, you know, the fact that it's human beings doing the work, there's probably something that's not exactly in the right place. But, you know, nothing major, no material weaknesses or, or significant concerning kinds of things that they're seeing that are, that are problematic that cause them to say this doesn't represent your financials in an appropriate or accurate way. And there's no, you know, they ask questions about fraud, there's no indication of that. There's no indication that there's any opportunity for people to do it. But they would tell us and would give us feedback on any and all of those kinds of things as they go through the process that they go through. And so they take certain samplings of, of particular transactions. And then that invariably sort of begs other questions that they want to follow up on. And, and it's a fairly involved process to kind of go back and forth with the auditors about this. And it, and it's, like I said, an opportunity to get better at what we do. You know, we don't have anybody that's trying to do anything, you know, inappropriate, so that makes it easy because we're generally compliant and we're, we, we press the point with, with our staff and faculty that, you know, that they, you know, we require certain things and we have certain procedures because we get audited and because we have an obligation to spend the public's money in its, you know, ca, you know, safe and careful and thoughtful and appropriate way for the purposes that they gave it to us for. And that's what these really tell us is that we did do that. So I think in, in all three cases, you know, there's, there's usually a spot in about the second or third paragraph on kind of the first page that has like a single line stuck in there where it's like no findings or some similar sort of statement that's almost buried in there. But the short story is we're in good shape, things are fine. Happy to answer any questions anyone has about this. It's, it's really, we're in a fortunate place where we have good policies and procedures. I have staff that do an excellent job of, of, at attending to those and taking care of, of the public's money. And we really try to be pretty thoughtful about what we do with, with what we're entrusted to do. So happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Tell me.
Thanks. So first of all, great to see that we have those findings. I wish the public was here because in some previous public comments, there were accusations thrown around that would be counter to what is shown here. So hopefully this will be noted and we can remember that when that happens again. I have a totally detailed question, but I, and this is for fiscal year '21 to '22. It seems that the post-employment benefits liabilities changed drastically from 103 million to 69 million. I'm just curious what happened that year with that.
So we're required, so every other year required to do a full OPEB or other post-employment benefits assessment and, and estimation. In the intervening year, they, they do an update, but it's not a full detailed thing. We switched the company that does it. So they made some slightly different assumptions that make a huge difference. So, you know, there's a couple of different things that play into that. Some of it's what you think essentially what the interest rate is going to be over time. You know, half a percentage point makes a huge difference. Same thing with what do you think the health insurance costs are going to go up for the next few years? So in the, in, in the OPEB report where they go through all this, they talk about that and they often will give kind of, oh, if we do it with this instead of this, here's what the number is. It was a significant change. Another thing it impacts is how many employees you have, including retirees. So, you know, if that number drops, that also causes your, your liability to drop. I was pleased to see it drop. It's an estimate about what's going to happen over the next 30 years. So it's a little, it's easier to work with when it's smaller. It's a lot easier, less worrisome for me as far as thinking about that. But at the same time, it, it can vary quite a bit. It was a noticeable drop. I think, you know, sort of all the factors. We had a few less employees, more positive earnings estimates for the future and more modest growth in health insurance costs were all factors that played into that. Great, thank you.
Sarah?
Actually had a question on the same, same issue. And I don't really understand this OPEB. But I know the town has been, town of Amherst has been having to catch up because it had underfunded, I guess. Or maybe it was the Hampshire retirement, county retirement was underfunding. And so every year, a lot of money goes from Amherst to catch up. So are we in that kind of position? Are we, I mean, I know the assumptions may turn out to be wrong. But are we keeping up with good faith estimates of what? but are we keeping up with good faith estimates of what
Yeah, so I think, we're I'll say this about retirement, um, because we're a member of the Hampshire County Retirement First, so for our folks that aren't in the teachers' retirement system, so all our paras, all our clerical staff, our custodians, they all pay into Hampshire County Retirement, and so, you know, we're dependent upon them to, you know, sort of calculate our piece of that of that puzzle. In both the the retirement system and in OPEB, you know, there are projections made into the future about what we think it's going to be, and in both circumstances, we're in a state of trying to get to what's called fully funded, in other words, if you're fully funded in your retirement system, what you're adding each year is just for the current employees and what they're going to need in the future. Your existing employees are 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 being paid out of, you know, sort of the balance.
Your existing retirees.
Your existing retirees, right, right now, we're in what's called a pay-as-you-go, and that's true on the pension side, as well as on the health insurance side or the OPEB side. The pension side, the state came in, I want to say in the mid eighties, and said, you guys need to put this on your balance sheet, and we're going to tell you how to do it. In other words, we're going to require you to join an organization to regularly sort of contribute, and you've got to get it funded by twenty thirty or and then we had the two thousand eight, so it's like twenty thirty-three, we should be at a fully funded place. When that happens, then the amount we pay to pension retirement will drop significantly, which what most communities are doing is is going to then pivot and start funding their health insurance, OPEB, much more aggressively at that point, so we're trying to make regular payments against our liability on OPEB. We're still doing a pay-as-you-go as far as the, you know, sort of year in, year out, we're paying all of that insurance cost just right out of our budget. Uh, and then we have a small amount that we're we're putting away for the future in in that OPEB fund. And we got a long way to go on that. You know, we're not compelled by statute to fund that. But if we want to borrow money, which we do sometimes, it does get factored into the consideration of our bond rating and that sort of thing, so it's important for us to continue to to contribute steadily to that, and then, uh, you know, if if we're able to get to fully funded with our retirement, then that should give us some resource to then more aggressively apply to the OPEB over time.
So it's not going to appear in the operating budget, I mean, I mean, that is in the operating, not in for instruction.
Yeah, not not for a while, I mean, you know, if we were if we were able to fully fund both of them, both the pension and 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 the OPEB, then yeah, we'd have some capacity, a little bit of capacity in our in our budget uh that we don't have right now. And and that's sort of what the state recognized and in and the government accounting standard boards recognized with with OPEB in the last decade or fifteen years, that that's a real liability, it's a real burden, and and it's going to consume more and more of the operating budgets of of cities and towns if they don't start kind of putting money away for that. I will share there, there's a couple of communities that are pretty highly funded in that regard. I think Wakefield, Mass actually passed an override to fully fund their their OPEB, so I think, you know, within a very short period, they may already be there, they have their OPEB fully funded. Which which allows them to, you know, they made that choice instead of spending it on other things, right, they did that instead of capital improvement, they did that instead of some other things, that was a particular choice. The reason I know that is because the guy that used to do our OPEB, when we first started having to do it, lives in Wakefield. So he shared that story about how they were approaching it as a community, but anyway, that's that's beside the point, but we're we're trying to, you know, and you'll see that line in our in our budgets. Um, we're trying to steadily increase that that contribution to OPEB, and of course, our retirement line's another line kind of in that same section. We're we're making, meeting our obligation at the uh at the local level here for for that staff that are not part of the MTRS system.
Jennifer, did you have your hand up?
I did. So Doug, thank you for explaining the difference between the three reports. They they all looked very similar, had similar words, so the one that's called, the one that has E O Y R in the title, that's an audit of the end of year report.
Correct.
And the end of year report is required by DESI, and it's an accounting, sorry, of every dollar spent, so and this document is an audit of that report.
Correct.
I I would be interested in seeing that report, is that something you can share with us?
Yes, it's, I will say this, it's 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 a giant spreadsheet, basically.
I would imagine, yeah.
When we print it out, it's about, each one for each district's about seventy-five pages, it it, what I would like to do, you know, this is on my sort of wish list of things to do for 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 you guys, but as well for us internally, is to is to take that and turn it into some some visuals, because that is the whole picture. So when we do our budgets, we're ti- we're typically really focused primarily on the appropriated budget, in other words, the tax dollars that are given to us uh as part of our our process with towns. And and it's it's most of the money we spend, but it's not all of the money we spend, and this gives, uh, the end of year report is a real picture of the whole thing. There's some areas where they're pretty broad in how they cut the information, like athletics is just athletics, it's like no differentiation of particulars within athletics.
Not even for Title IX?
Right, right, they don't they don't do a gender-based thing or anything like that, um, but then there's other things that, you know, special education in particular, because it's, you know, a big part of most schools' budgets and and an area of of requirement, there's lots of detailed questions about that, so I'd love to get to a place, I'm happy to share the reports. And I'd love to get to a place where um we can kind of take that and put it in a little more visual format for for you guys to kind of see and review, because I think it's helpful in understanding where we spend and what we're compelled to spend, and how we spend our entitlement funds that we get. And it's, you know, sort of actual dollars spent in in a particular year, um, so I think it can be really helpful to get that full picture of of uh totality of of what's going on. Again, the line share, what we spend is what's been appropriated to us, but there are, you know, I mean, like I said, there there's a, you know, if you get seven hundred fifty thousand dollars or more of grants from the feds, you got to do a re- an audit, so that's a non-trivial amount of money that we spend on that, and and how we leverage those funds is important to understand as well. So, yeah, I I think what I've traditionally done when I printed the document, I think we print it to a PDF, so we can share those with you, but they're pretty massive.
Yeah, I mean, I, that, if you want to do something more elaborate with presenting it, that's fine, but if I could see the the spreadsheet or whatever it is you submit to DESI, that that'll be fine, I don't need it to be hard copy printed. But electronically would be great.
Easy, easy question, I think. I'll wait till Doug finishes writing. So did the state get all these back in December? And and it's, we're seeing them now, and did the state care that they were a year or however, that they're late?
The state does care, um, they like them to be a little sooner than, we've we've actually had this for a little bit, a a little while, they also understand, um, you know, if you're if you're in process with with your auditor, sometimes it's that you're dependent upon the auditor to kind of complete them and finish and that sort of thing. But, um, you know, as is the case with the state, if you if if there's something that they really want, when they get serious, they'll they'll say things like, well, if we don't have it by date X, we'll stop sending you money. So we didn't have that happen, I'll just say that. But we try to be timely with it, we we were a little behind on on this, there were aspects that were done earlier and 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 we're still okay on the on the fiscal twenty-three, it's a matter of just kind of getting the bow put on it at this point, I think we're we're really, really close, and so if I get that, you know, I may very well, if if we get that in the next week or so, I'll share it with you, you know, at the next meeting, quite frankly.
I just have one question, one thing that comes to mind, now you've got those fiscal years, and soon you'll have you'll have the twenty-three one, is compared to the budget that you present to school committee of the projections, like, how does that align with the dollars spent, like, what types of patterns do you see out of what you put forward to us compared to at the end of the year what was spent, and like, where, I know we see some of that in like the quarterly reports, but I just wonder if there's any sort of trends or things across years that might help us as we start to look at where to, um, you know, put forward in our other future budgets.
Yeah, the, a couple of things, I think, you know, budget's a sort of aspirational document in some ways, this is how we think we're going to spend it, this is where we think we need the money, and then the reality shows up on July one and plays out over the course of the next three hundred and sixty-five days. I think there are areas where we we align pretty well, and I think there are areas where you know, we talk about this sometimes in the quarterly reports, like we haven't been able to hire certain staff, and so we've got more contracted services to cover some of those things, or we've just not spent the money because we haven't done that thing. You know, and one of the things when building the budget, I will also say, you know, as we go through those and and construct for the new year, when we do it for staffing, we're looking at the staff we have, and we're projecting them with their grade and step, that sort of thing, so we're basing it on, you know, sort of who we've got in the building now, and and we have those conversations, do we need to have staff in a different place? So we try to be pretty accurate with that, I think we do okay in the in the sort of staffing realm, uh, you know, some things just play out differently, kids show up that need certain coverage and services and that sort of thing, and it kind of skews skews things one way or the other. On the expense side, one of the things I try to regularly do as we go through, is to review how we how our spending's gone in the, you know, sometimes we know things, like, oh, you know, we've talked to our insurance people, and they said, oh, we don't have the quote just yet, but you're probably going to see a six percent increase in your health, in your in your property insurance, or whatever it is, so we try to be, you know, project in that way, and those are those are fairly accurate uh sometimes, and and if we see trends of of spending, we try to be you know, thoughtful about adjusting as we go. You know, we don't always immediately adjust, sometimes it's a one-year spike in spending in some things, you know, I mean, we've got areas of the budget where you have like a couple hundred dollars, right, well, we might not spend any three years in a row, and then spend six hundred dollars, you know, but you know, it's kind of the neighborhood, and so that is a little bit there. I think we do okay, and we're always trying to get better at it, and I think that when you look at Q four, um, so we'll do a quarter four report kind of at the beginning, it'll probably be September before we actually get it put together, where we've got the the, you know, the the fiscal year sort of finished. That's the opportunity to kind of look at that, because, you know, um, and and that's part of what we're going to try to explain in that, it's like, well, what went sideways relative to what we budgeted, you know, what was what was uh optimistic or problematic, and and we try to have a little bit of that as as part of our conversation when we do Q four. But actually, as we build budgets, we also think about, oh, do we need to shift what we're doing here, do we know, are we are we continuing to see spending in this particular line that 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 we just need to budget more money for? That expense is just going to be there, and we just need to be honest with ourselves about it, not steal away from somewhere else in our budget uh to make that happen, so we're we're trying to do a little bit of both. So.
Any further question, okay, perfect. Alrighty, so, next up is our, um, so, the Budget Subcommittee Strategic Planning, so a couple of different people had reached out about ideas around the Budget Subcommittee, so I thought we should bring it back, so we can all have our conversations together. So, currently, the Budget and Audit Subcommittee is myself, Sarah, and Tillman. And historically, that my understanding, I haven't sat on it before, um, that Subcommittee works closely with the Finance Director. And so moving moving forward, we have, um, you know, we're going to have a rough budget year next year, and so in order to make that go as smooth as we can and be as thoughtful and creative with with what we need to do, I think we're probably going to have work to do over the summer and starting pretty soon. Uh, so I think we should have a conversation about how we want that committee to look, and where we should start focusing our energies and, um, so Sarah, you had some?
Yeah, I had, um, emailed some ideas to Sarah Vess and Tillman. So I think we definitely, uh, it's my recommendation that we reactivate or activate that Subcommittee. And add Anna if she's, surprise, willing, because then we will have all four towns represented on that Subcommittee, and I think that that Subcommittee could do a few things, first, perhaps meet with Doug to find out what kinds of information he conveys about the budget process and, you know, the how how it works with our four towns, how what information or kind of calendar or flow chart is going to go to the new superintendent and how just so we know that's happening, and kind of what maybe the typical or schedule has been in the past. We can also perhaps facilitate introductions or discussions with the finance people in some of the other towns, start that early, I think the Subcommittee could also propose to the full committee revised process, budget process, for the entire committee, so that we don't just a draft budget doesn't just land on us in February or March or whenever, even though we will have gone to four towns meetings. I I don't know where all that would lead, but um it seems to be, seems to me to be a logical place to start, since we have that Subcommittee, and it hasn't done anything in the six months I've I've been part of it.
Jennifer?
Thanks, I also asked to discuss this today, so I'm glad we're talking about it, so if I look at the description, it says reviews the capital plan, fee requests, and annual budget, and it has an average of three School Committee representatives. So I agree with expanding it to four, because four is the biggest Subcommittee we have, and the more people, the more people to do the work. And so the the three members, three current members are the twenty-three, twenty-four School Committee Representatives, which implies that it's a committee that gets reconstituted for the new academic year, so I would I would want to check in with those three members to see if they're still interested in serving, I am interested in being on it, so I don't think we necessarily need a person from each town, we've had this discussion before about about Subcommittee's. And I think that the Subcommittee needs to, I think, I think, big picture, what our districts need is bigger, I I mean, I think what the message that we've gotten is, our needs are greater than the towns can support. So we're going to need multi- a multifaceted work and a multifaceted solution, and I think one of the things the Subcommittee can and should do is divide and conquer and research things like, how do you get a proposition two and a half on the ballot in each of the four towns? What what can we do at the state level to advocate for more funds, and and other other ways of generating revenue? I think that's going to be an important thing. As well as looking internally at our budget to see I don't know, like, I think I think there's going to, there's a, there's going to be an expense part of it, and then a revenue part of it. So, yeah, and I think it's going to be a committee that will need to work over the summer, and will need to start getting kicking into gear soon.
Yep, so I'd also send something to Sarah Vess on the same theme, so I think we're thinking a lot along the lines, I think what I was really thinking is that long-term thinking that we need to do about sustainability with the schools, how can, where are places where we can find cost savings, whether it's like, can we get some capital inputs so that we could reduce our utilities, or whether there's savings in facilities, IT, transport, like where else, because this committee's been really clear on wanting to keep the cuts away from the classroom, so where else can we look? At the same time, are there any academic programming or curricular savings that won't, you know, cut at the heart of what the people in our community want to see for the schools, so? And then the last thing I think Jennifer mentioned, but that widespread sort of av- advocacy revving new generation, whether it's, um, you know, the work with the state like Deb's been doing, or the, um, or Prop two and a half or however, but I'd like to see all that happen, and I, um, yeah, it's too bad four is the minimum number you can have, because maybe you even need Subcommittee's of your Subcommittee.
Sarah?
Yeah, I I I forgot the last piece of what I was suggesting, but but I think Jennifer and Bridget have touched on it, I think that we we need to start some blue sky thinking about what our schools might look like over the longer term, so I I'm not just thinking of what happens next year, but that and beyond, and that, um, because our towns are very unlikely to continue covering deficits. And I think that we we, as a committee, will at some point discuss with the new superintendent, ask her to or give her permission to, direct her to, if we agree, to to start some of this blue sky thinking about reimagining, I I don't know, you know. I, I don't know, you know, because maybe small changes won't be enough. I don't know what medium or big changes there might be, but, um, so yes, not just a process for next year, but, um, beyond. And I, but I do wanna make a pitch for having someone from each town because the towns are, are quite, seem quite concerned now about our, um, commitment to figuring this out. And I think it might be helpful for them, each town, to have, have a local person who can be their kind of contact or touch point or some, something like that on the Subcommittee.
Anna's?
Oh, yeah.
I was just gonna, um, to coach you, a couple of you folks have, have touched on this a little bit. I, I will share, and this kind of touches on a little bit of the Superintendent update, but I'll, I'll share it now. So in preparation for the new Superintendent coming and, and understanding, you know, the, the, financial picture that's presenting itself this year as well as what we anticipate the following year and, and also just doing some projective work, you know, over, over the last few months with regard to future years. And, you know, we're in a structural deficit situation with our regional budget. Our expenses are rising faster than, than our, um, revenues typically will. Obviously, if there are, you know, major shifts in how Chapter Seventy's funded or whatever, that, that changes that. And there's a structural problem there that we need to look at and, and think about. And so in, in preparation, you know, uh, for the new Superintendent and, and, and thinking forward to, to say, what and how do we approach this? Because, you know, we've taken a sort of shaving approach, um, over the last few years and that's generally been fine. There, you know, we've had some, you know, reductions in enrollment that help us sort of accommodate some of that, that difference. And, um, and then we have a year like this year that, that, you know, for Fiscal Twenty-Five, it's much more substantially difficult. It's likely that next year will be similarly difficult. And so, you know, uh, one of the things I've done with, with our, our district leadership over the last few weeks is to talk about a few different things, not exclusively region, but at the region, thinking about, um, that idea of sort of visioning and, and, you know, sort of mission envisioning sort of work. Um, and it plays into the idea of a district improvement plan to some extent, which is something we need to revise and revisit anyway. But just trying to get started on that a little bit to, partly to kind of frame some of the questions that people have. Think about the, the things that have impact, you know, certainly the, the capital infrastructure that we're dealing with. We have two buildings that are fairly old. I mean, even this newest part of this building's thirty years old at this point, or almost thirty years old. So, you know, there's some significant needs there. What's our enrollment looking like? As we continue to, um, move forward and we might be in constrained circumstances, whether it be by virtue of just revenue or fewer students or whatever, what are the things that are most critically core to us as a, you know, as an internal conversation? It's also a conversation with you guys and with the community at large. But I think there are, there are things that sort of, um, you know, educational leaders and staff, you know, have thoughts about and, and have, uh, understanding of and, and some of its compliance-related stuff and some of its, you know, directions that they think the district would be best served, et cetera. You know, so there's, there's a lot of cross-pollination of conversations, but I would, would like to just indicate, you know, there's some of that beginning of that we've started to have, just to start framing about how internally we need to approach some of this. How we think about organizing some people, um, to attack some aspects of the problem, think about some of those things. You know, how quickly we'll be able to take much action on that and, and how much, um, movement in that regard will somewhat depend on, on, on what and how the new Superintendent wants to take that. We wanted to get started, just begin the thinking about that a little bit. Understanding that there's a political process and, and a, a pretty powerful process that you all play in that as well. Not ignoring that, but also, you know, there's things that we as, as the staff, need to, to be, uh, thinking deeply about and, and planning about and, and, and working through a little bit, to give you options and give the Superintendent options as well. So we're starting to begin that conversation. It's still pretty nebulous at the moment. But I did wanna mention, we, we are thinking in, in and around that. You know, and, and these are really hard conversations, cause it's, you know, what, what, and, you know, what can you offer? What can you continue to afford to offer? What can you do with the number of students you have? And we're in a competitive market with charter schools and choice and that sort of thing. So how do we continue to sustain ourselves over time, given the number of factors that, that play into, to constrain us in some ways or, or limit us or, uh, you know, impinge upon our, our work in ways, uh, that, that are, are difficult. So, so I, I just wanna mention that we're, internally, we're thinking about that a little bit and trying to be, uh, proactive a little bit in, in getting started on that and, and, you know, we're, are looking forward to kind of connecting with, with School Committee about that too.
So I have a couple of different things. One is, in order to start seriously thinking about just next year, it'd be really helpful to get a level services estimate so that we can see how much we might need to cut out of our budget for next year or make up for in new revenues. And then secondly, I don't know if the Budget Committee can take on all of the work that needs to be done around the budget. And so I'm wondering if we also need to make, say, a second Subcommittee that is in charge of looking at new revenue sources specifically. Because I think that there's the idea of like looking at the budget, but then the additional work of doing sort of proactive state-level, advocacy, uh, talking with Amherst College, potentially talking with UMass, maybe looking for other funders, whatever, raising money kind of ideas. I don't know that the four people on the Budget Committee can take that on too. And so it might be nice to split that up a little bit and have that, um, put on a, a, a different group of people. And then, um, it's not, it's a little bit complicated because capital expenses are separate from operating expenses. But I feel like that there, there are some, some things that should be looked into to save on the operating capital side of things like energy. And I think we had a student write us about some suggestions that may or may not be realistic. But it was very, very awesome, um, email from them. But looking at things like solar for the roof and geothermal or other kinds of, um, heat pump options, to replace older, um, energy ide, uses in the schools are, would be helpful. And trying to look for grants, I know that there are a few grant programs to help install solar on school roofs. And so we could look at, at a, and I think one of them was like due on the fourteenth. So we're kinda out of luck on that one.
Three days?
Yeah. But there, I think there are some grant programs that we could look into to try to apply for, but we need to really start getting, moving on some of them and we may be too late already. But to look and see what other ones might be out there for us. And I don't know if that's something that that secondary Subcommittee might be able to take on.
Uh, Tillman?
So I think there's, there are two separate questions. One is next year's budget and figuring it out. And then the, let's say, longer-term, more open-ended conversation around what the future looks like. I think that second question relates to strategic planning. It needs to involve the new Superintendent. And I don't foresee that that can conclude fast enough to have a significant impact on the FY twenty-six budget. So I, I do think that we can separate those two and, you know, look at them separately. I agree that we need to find revenue sources and we wanna be mindful about impacts. But let me for a sec, take a pessimistic perspective here. I think it'll be great if we get any additional funds, but it's, we should, we should at some point assume that that's not gonna happen. And, um, I think those of us who talk to our towns have probably seen the overall reluctance to, uh, go over the four percent. And even that seems to be a, a significant hurdle for some of the towns. So I think we should plan for one scenario where we could be here next year with four percent or less increase of the budget and no additional funds. And what I didn't appreciate about this year's process was that, and I understand the, the complexities of this, but I think one of the things that surprised many of us was that we didn't see the impact on academics until very late in the process. And then we basically were surprised and, you know, that led to all kinds of, you know, needing to make decisions quickly. And I think what we should do this year is to at least, plan for the worst-case scenario and what the implications are, um, for academics and for the whole budget. And like what that really means on the ground. I'm not sure that we're gonna, we're gonna hate it, right? We're not gonna enjoy it, but with more time, we hopefully can make good decisions about how to reduce spending so that it has the least impact as much as, as it's possible. But, um, yeah, so we should do that.
So I'll, I'll share a couple of things. You know, we did do some, some work on projecting, you know, uh, and I think I shared this with you. I mean, and this is a very rough number at this point, so we don't wanna get too locked in, but it's about one point two million, likely to be a shortfall for next year, assuming standard sort of increases. You know, the overall assessment across all four towns, any individual town is a little different, goes up about, what did I say, about three percent or so roughly in a given year? You know, our expenses rise a little over four percent and we've got a gap of, of, um, the last bit of S R money that's coming out of our budget. So that's why it's, it's a bigger bite next, next fall. Here's the other thing, a little sort of, you know, bad news on top of bad news, is that, you know, we've cut, you know, we've made some pretty significant reductions in, in central office. You know, one of the things I've said recently to folks is that, you know, um, we may have fewer students, but the number of reports the state asks for is still the same. And that, you know, level of reporting and work and administration that has to occur is, is, doesn't scale with students. It's sort of like classrooms. It's, you know, you lose a couple of students, you have the same number of classrooms. You gotta lose a chunk of students before you start to see a reduction in, in, uh, you know, need for staffing around that. So, so this is, is true. So I think our, our capacity in the, um, sort of central administration is gonna be really tough to reduce anymore. I think we're gonna really struggle even this year, given where we're at staffing-wise, um, to do all of it. Some of that's also with retirements that, you know, sort of institutional knowledge, you lose some efficiency there. But, but I think also we're, we're looking at a pretty tough number. The other thing I'll say just generally is that, you know, when, when, whenever we're reducing, you know, our budget on the order of, you know, four or five percent, which, when you get around a million dollars, you're talking in that, in that sort of range, regardless of what the cuts are, they're gonna be bad. And they're gonna be things you care about, because, you know, we don't have things that we don't care about. We've already cut those. And we didn't really, I mean, I, we didn't have things we didn't care about. We just found things that we cared more about than, and, and that's gonna be the, the conversation this year is, is we're gonna have to likely make some, you know, what specifically those will be will again break late. And part of that's about being, you know, thoughtful and careful about the human beings involved and, and our notification timelines in that regard. But, you know, if we get to December in the four towns meeting and we do that and it's in that one point two million dollars, I mean, you get above eight hundred thousand, anytime you get above the eight hundred thousand dollars for the regional budget, it's gonna be some really difficult reductions. And so, you know, if it's not X, it's Y, if it's not Y, it's Z. And there are people that care very deeply about each one of those. And, and they are rich things that matter a lot to students. And, and so I, I wanna just prepare everybody for the difficulty of the coming conversations. Because I think we're gonna be in that place. I think Tillman's probably right. The, the, the shift on the revenue side is, is not likely to be significant. I'll be happy to be wrong. The legislature, you know, is, is interested in looking at Chapter Seventy. I think there's some momentum there. A lot of districts have said, hey, we're in a bind. You know, S R's going away, inflation's been high the last two years. It's sort of this really complex, uh, impact on, on the, on the expense aspect of budgets. So, you know, there's potentially motivation to have a conversation at the state level about that. Whether they can get something done in the next six or seven months, I don't know. We'll see. Happy if they, they do, but, but, um, it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult. And, and that's part of the need to have these conversations early about what do we care most significantly and most passionately about? And likewise, you know, internally, we have to have those same conversations. What has the most impact? What, what improves the educational outcome for the most kids? And, and sometimes those aren't very sexy, um, you know, and, and it's hard, cause you wanna do stuff. And we wanna keep all the things we do, cause we do some really neat stuff. But it's gonna be a really tough year. And I think even in the next couple of years, we're gonna be having, you know, similar, maybe not quite as severe, but pretty similar kind of conversations. So as we think about that and, and, and try to be thoughtful and systemic and strategic about understanding what we care about and, and what we wanna, you know, not yield at all on. And how we go about having a conversations publicly about how to fund it and, and, and sustain ourselves and, you know, be somewhat competitive relative to, to those that challenge us, uh, for students.
So I was gonna say that, um, I personally would say we should keep the Budget Committee the same. I think three is an appropriate amount. I do think we need to maybe have an Advisory Subcommittee. We have the Equity Advisory Subcommittee and that feels like it can bring in more community members. Um, and so it could be a larger group, um, and have more of an impact than that they could, than that Advisory Committee could advise us of what we wanna do. So I would say maybe look at what an Advisory Committee is, um, to this to a committee versus a Subcommittee. And maybe in it, doing that in addition to the, um, I'm kinda mumbling, sorry, in addition to having the, um, Budget Committee that we have in place now. The other thing I think is that we get lost in and is we're trying to recreate a, a, a system, is that we have school councils. We're supposed to have school councils. The school council's goals are to adopt educational goals for the schools that are consistent with educational policies. They're supposed to identify the educational needs of the students. They're supposed to review the annual school budget. Form and a student, uh, form a school improvement plan. If we had those stats in front of us, we could do our job better, I think, and, and look at what we want for a budget. I felt like this year we had a really loss of, we were looking at cuts. I don't know how it's really gonna impact the students. And we only were able to listen to the people who came forward, the teachers that came forward and the, the students who came forward, who were very passionate about something, but it didn't really give us a lens as to what the whole impact was. So I would say, why don't we have school councils? Why don't we have improvement plans? And if we did, did the school councils this year, the school councils this year, look at the budget and approve it before they send it to us? They're supposed to for their own schools. So could you comment on where the school councils are and how they could help us have more people at the table talking about what our budgets could look like, what the improvement plans, where we need to invest the money with our students?
Yeah, I think that, that school councils are, are an area of, uh, of opportunity, I think, is one way to say it. You know, I think there's been some, some energy around them a little bit. There's a whole host of things that they're able to provide comments on. And, and so in some ways, it depends on membership to, to be willing to talk about those things. And, you know, it, it has a, a staff component too that we have to factor in and, and capacity of staff to, to meet and, and work with, with them as well. But I think, uh, I would agree with you that there's opportunity there for, for those councils to provide meaningful input to you as a board, uh, in, in, and the district as well. You know, it's, it's, um, but it's also important to, you know, to get and have, um, you know, folks on that that are willing to commit, you know, sort of time and energy like you all do. Cause it's gonna be a parallel. To do the things that are tasked in a school council requires us a, a similar, uh, time commitment to what you guys are tasked with here at the, at the School Committee. So I think that's, um, there is an opportunity there, I think. And I think there's also a, a need to, to try to find some folks that are willing to kind of participate in that. So I think if, you know, and, and, and so if there, there are folks that are willing to, you know, reach out to the building principals and, and be able to, to get that started. Again, this one of those things where, where we had Talib Siddique sort of spread between two buildings, difficult to run two of those as an individual with having people in, in those leadership roles in both buildings. It should be more manageable to, to kind of lead that and move that along. So I'm hopeful it can be a, a resource for, for us all in that regard.
Do we have school councils right now for the middle school and high school?
I believe we do. I don't know, I know that. I don't know if, if, if Mr. Siddique sort of combined them into one for both buildings. I don't think he did. I think he actually tried to form one in each. I don't know how successful. I know he's had a couple of meetings because we've had conversations about it. I don't know how many, or if he's had any recently, but he, he was trying to get that rolling a little bit this year. So I think there's, you know, it's probably been a little uneven and hopefully it'll be able to run a little smoother with, with, you know, sort of administrative staff being a little more settled next year.
And do you know if they did look over the budget proposals for each school?
I don't think that they did. I think they had some other areas that they were looking into a little bit more, probably more along the lines of the school improvement plan is where I think they looked at more closely and spent their time. But I don't know 100%.
Any timeline of when we might see an improvement plan since 2018, I think was the last one?
Well, a district improvement plan's certainly been that long. That takes a while. School improvement plan, um, I'll have to check. I don't recall if they worked on, I think that was part of what they were doing was potentially work on that to, to update that. Cause I think, um, the elementary schools did. I don't know if the secondary did or not.
I think the elementary did last year.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, secondary, I don't think had, had opportunity to, but.
I just think this is all information that we have to have as a, as we're looking at the budgets.
Yep.
And I don't think it should, the budget subcommittee should be tasked with all this. We have mechanisms set up in our policies that a lot of this data should be collected from other groups, and we're just not getting any of that information.
Bridget, did you have your?
Yeah, I did. So I'm just gonna throw out a couple, like, random facts that I heard come up in conversation, and then I think I'm gonna make a motion. Um, so the first one was, um, there was an article in then, um, one of the local papers today comparing budgets across from 2003 to 2023. And, um, I just read it really quickly on my way to the meeting and caught a couple of, of glaring, glaring sort of like missteps in it. But one thing that I think that Doug mentioned that really stands out to me as someone who's been in education, sorry to date myself, since 2003, is the number of unfunded mandates that have been added to districts over that time, whether it's the central office reports like Doug's talking about, or particularly the type of student services, things you have to do in discipline and accountability or special ed or whatever. So I think those are all things to bear in mind. And just as we think about the context, I wanna say like North Hampton's mayor put the school budget through with an eight percent increase. And we see neighboring towns, Agawam, et cetera, et cetera, going after the 2.5%. So I don't want us to already fall into the pessimistic category that Tillman's in as much as I appreciate the realism. Like I think we have to do two things at once. And just for Anna, I up-tended a webinar on, on the federal money for the solar panels, and it's unlimited and it's non-competitive. The state money is competitive and it's a much smaller amount, but they'll cover like a significant chunk of it. But the timeline, we do need to get started now because the money's run out in fiscal year 27. And, um, they really will give a competitive advantage to school districts that have taken advantage of the money because our own operating budget could be affected at the region by 600,000 almost. I'm sure there'll still be some small electric, but if you put in heat pumps and solar and whatever, you would bring those costs way, way, way down. So with all that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint a budget sustainability committee with a mission focused on strategic planning around financial cost savings, um, potential academic savings. And maybe we can ask for reports from the school council on those types of budget things and some revenue sources increases. And then when I think about that, I'm thinking Deb Leonard's already done so much work on the state budgets. I've gotten so involved in the budgets, and then Jennifer expressed an interest. So I almost think that would start out that committee. And you could have your four, and we could have our three, and everybody would be putting some motion towards this like really huge issue that's before us. So I just wanna make the motion, and then we can discuss the motion, which is to, um, to propose a budget sustainability committee for long-term strategic planning around the budget.
So I'm gonna second it so we can have our conversation.
Can I ask for clarification?
Now we are conversing.
Okay. You're a. So, so at first I thought you meant that this was gonna focus on, on advocacy and revenue, and which is, which is great. And I liked, I think it was Anna's idea of having a committee to, to formalize that and do the, what Deb's doing and others are doing and the prop two and a half and go after grants. I think that's super. I think, but that's a, I see that as a different issue from, from the academic, kind of long-range academic institutional planning that, that is focused on trying to get a handle on the expenses.
Okay.
So do you wanna keep that one? The budget subcommittees, you know, was focusing on expense, short and long term, and isn't gonna do all the work itself because it couldn't. But to basically spearhead that effort. And if there was this, if you wanna call it sustainability or, or revenue committee advocacy, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, okay. I agree with you. That academic piece was the one piece that I felt like most fuzzy about. But hearing what William said about those school councils and really needing to get the school voices and the alignment with the school improvement plans, um, in the budget. I mean, if you folks are willing to do it, it's good. I just feel like that's a piece I wouldn't wanna see left aside.
Tillman.
I, I think there's a way of splitting it between revenue and expenses or between short-term and long-term.
Okay.
And since you mentioned strategic, strategic planning, which is a word I cannot pronounce, I felt that the academic piece should be part of it because it's looking at the long-term, you know, development of the school, right? Maybe there's a different way of approaching things and then that affects, you know, how much, you know, revenues we need. So I, I would feel comfortable if you split the committees between short-term, let's look for, you know, FY '26, whatever we can do, and then long-term, but then discuss everything. It would be really awkward to be in a committee where you couldn't talk about academic things because the charge is only to look at the revenue piece. And especially if you say strategic planning, that should really encompass everything. So in my opinion, it would be good if you could split the committees, but just by the, the scope in terms of time.
I, the only hesitation I have in that is I don't think that all of us are ready to give up on fiscal year '26. Like is, there may not be much we can do, but we don't wanna just say that there's nothing we can do, so.
Good.
I was gonna say that unrelated to your motion, but I, I think it's really important that we get to the impacts as quickly as we can. I, I know Doug, you said this will be late-breaking news, but I think this is the wrong strategy. Because to the general public saying 1. whatever million dollar shortfall means nothing. Sorry, no offense to the public. I mean, it's, it's more abstract than, than saying, saying, okay, we're gonna cut, you know, 30 positions, and here are the areas where they're gonna go. We started in the past cycle, right? The, the moment we were specific about what the cuts were, we had lots of people here with strong opinions. I think it's really important that we have those conversations early. Because if then the consensus is that this is unacceptable, we need time to explain to the towns that they need to do something about this, and we should channel the energy of the public to talk to whoever is making the money available. I don't wanna be in a situation where we know right now that we're gonna have, worst case, a, a really big cut. And then wait until March and have people be violently upset with us that we're cutting positions, right? We know that if we cannot find additional revenues and if, you know, we stay within the 4%, there will be significant cuts. We need to start talking about what those specifically are and see if the public accepts them.
I like Tillman's strategy.
So I, I'm gonna double down on what Tillman said and just say, you know, in addition to the town, we need to show the town council in Amherst and also in the each individual towns, you know, what we're fighting for. Because we got accused of coming to them late, you know, an emergency funding request. But that, the reason it became an emergency was because the cuts became very clear and concrete to the public, who then created a huge push for additional funding that we heard. And so for us to be accused of asking for emergency money at the last minute is a little bit misleading. And so what I want to be able to do is to come in early, say, these are the potential cuts that we're facing. What do we do about it now that you know? And we have months to go to the individual towns. We have months to talk to the finance committee. We have months to discuss this amongst ourselves, to figure this out. This isn't an emergency. This isn't a last-minute request. This is because these cuts mean specific teachers, they mean specific positions, and people don't want that. And we, without those specific names and specific numbers, we can't do that kind of advocacy.
Uh, yep.
And I understand that it's hard.
So, uh, there's a couple of things. I'll, I'm gonna push back a little bit on this for a couple of reasons. You know, if we start talking in November about cutting four positions out of math department, people are gonna start looking for work in December and leaving in January and February, right? And then if we shift and say in, in January that it's gonna be science instead of math, then it's gonna be a different thing. So there's a couple of pieces to this. We wanna think about the human toll on the people in the building. There's a, there's an impact there about having these conversations early and being specific. Because, you know, we have notifications, you know, uh, in our contract with teachers in, in particular by April 15th so that they have opportunity to then apply for work elsewhere. And even when we have circumstances where, you know, there was additional funding that became more likely to be than not, which means some of those positions that we had given notice to people, hey, your position's back, they may have made other decisions. We lose good staff when we have those conversations too early and too prospectively when we don't know what those outcomes are really gonna be. The, I, I think that the way to approach it is, is this. And, and we try to, uh, you know, when we sort of put, um, you know, numbers in front of you, and we try to do this as early as we can, we won't be speci, we tend to not be specific about departments because we don't know what kids are gonna enroll in. We don't know what, um, places might have capacity to tolerate those losses because we try to use attrition when we can. And the reality is, is if we say there's five or six or seven F T E, it doesn't matter in some ways. It's always something we care about. You know, if you see six F T E, that's the high school math department is six or seven people. That's the way to always think of it and frame it. We don't know what this, and the thing is, is that you talk about it, you know, oh, it's math. Oh, now it's science. You're gonna get, get a different group of folks coming to, to, to rally around that particular thing. So I think that the real key is when you see cuts of a large size. And we try to, you know, sort of frame that in generic terms. What's that mean people-wise? You know, and we use, you know, an estimate of about $70,000 per teacher. You divide that into, you know, you get a, you get a headcount. It's the neighborhood. It, it often doesn't work out to be quite that big, but it's the neighborhood. And, you know, you just look at the roster of staff and you say, 10 of these aren't gonna be here. How does that happen? Who and what? It's something we care about deeply. It's gonna be our art department, it's gonna be our science department, it's gonna be our math department, it's gonna be engineering, it's gonna be, it's gonna be things that we care deeply about, or it's gonna be supports. Because some areas of our budget around things like special education, we have very little ability to sort of compress. So there's some aspects of, of the work that just don't have much wiggle. Other areas we have more, those are much more vulnerable. And that's where I think from a strategic planning standpoint, we, we talk about what are the things we defend most? I wanna say aggressively, but most, yeah, fiercely. So that when we're in a situation of reduction, we, we know what's probably the most likely to be at risk, you know, without it being terribly specific. But I think the specifics aspect, it's really hard when you talk about actual people and jobs and, and sort of what, what's likely, and especially if it's going to change, which it is, it will evolve. And so that's, we, we have traditionally been and always have been, um, uh, careful about the specifics, trying to identify the F T E size so we have some sense of it. And when it's two or three, then it starts to be much more nuanced. We try to find those sort of soft spots of, of a retirement or something that we can fit or certain enrollments that can fit. When it gets up in that five, six, seven, eight F T E in a given building, that's gonna be things we care very much about. And, and if we don't have some structural change in how we deliver some of those things, or we don't have some, some, um, you know, other kind of, of systemic approach to it, we're gonna have, um, really, really difficult conversations about what those are. And they're all gonna be things that people are gonna come out and say, you can't possibly cut, pick a topic, right? So I don't wanna be too resistant to the idea. I, I think there's some real depth of thinking we wanna think about around programs to study. What are the things we are gonna absolutely try to do? And what are the strategic things we can do to sustain ourselves over time? Make ourselves more resilient relative to these kind of ebbs and flows, mostly ebbs in this regard. But, but, um, you know, I think that's, that's, i- i- it's difficult to get too specific too early. I think is really what the point I'm making.
Uh, Jennifer?
So, um, while I agree that we should, we should be, we should, it would be great to know what those cuts, what those projected cuts are gonna be sooner. I, I, I'm, my position, my feeling is that we don't need to know in December at the four towns meeting. I take Doug's point that that's too early. But it, but this year we learned too late. Like this year, we, we, when we had our first, we had our budget forum in March, we didn't know then what the cuts were gonna be. So I'm thinking of, my position is I don't think we need to know months earlier what the projected cuts are gonna be, more like weeks earlier so that we can just have a little bit more information as we're having these discussions. All that being said, I agree with what Doug said in that I, I don't need to know what the cuts are gonna be in order to know that people will find them unacceptable, whatever they are. At one point, as Doug was saying, 1.2 million in cuts, people are gonna be here telling us they're unacceptable. I don't even need to know what they are to know that that's gonna happen. So, um, so yeah, if we, I, I mean, if we can get the information a few weeks earlier as opposed to months earlier, I think that, that will help our process. This idea of the two committees and how should they be structured, I don't really know. What I do know is that what I wanna do, what I'm feeling, what I feel passionate about is I wanna focus on revenue for fiscal '25, '26. Because we've already, we, we know what the budget shortfall is probably gonna be. We've already heard from the towns that they're not gonna give us enough to cover that shortfall. So knowing what the, what the shortfall's gonna represent and talking with the towns is not gonna help us for fiscal '25, for fiscal '20, '26. We need to work on other revenue sources. And I take Tillman's point that we, at, at, at some, like, I, I'm a, both a realist and an optimist. And we have to try to generate, to look at, to research other revenue sources. And if our efforts are not fruitful, then okey-dokey, we're gonna have to make the cuts. But we have to try. And we, we shouldn't assume that they're gonna be fruitful. But I also don't wanna assume that they're not gonna be fruitful. We just, we have to know that, like, we have to try, and if it works, great. And if it doesn't, then we will have to make the cuts. So I don't know how to, I don't know what I'm thinking about how the committees are gonna be organized. I just know I really wanna work on revenue, on some committee that involves revenue.
Uh, Tillman?
I, um, I agree, Doug, that just getting the F T E number would be good. And I agree to, that there's a concern about picking specific departments. That's, I said that, but now that, you know, in retrospect, I think what I really was asking for is just, is the F T E number to see what the impact is. And I, I think the earlier the better. And, um, because, yes, nobody will love it, and we don't wanna surprise anyone, and, yeah.
Uh, Anna?
So I feel like 1.2 is still gonna look like 20-ish, but.
20s people?
Seventeen.
F T E. But I think maybe what might be a good compromise is if you could break it. break it down by department, not the people, but say, we have X FTEs in these different departments. And so we could go to the public and say, twenty FTEs is like the entire math department and the entire science department. Or it's the entire music program and the entire language program. Or, and so then we can sort of make it more real to constituents without making it specific. And so we could say, look, when we're talking about twenty FTEs, we're not just talking about people who don't interact with your kids. We're talking about numbers that will be the equivalent of losing entire departments like this, or cutting entire programs like that, or losing all of the paraeducators that we have on staff. And by saying things like that, without being specific, we're gonna lose Mr. Thompson and Ms., you know, Smith, we can still say, this is the equivalent of the impact of losing twenty FTE. And we don't have the capacity to lose staff in this area or this area because we already cut every single person that we possibly could. Like, we can't lose any more central office staff. And people are still telling us that we can lose central office staff, and we can't lose central office staff. We don't have any more, we don't have enough to do the job that we have. And so being able to sort of make that kind of equivalence for people, I think, would be a little bit helpful.
If I could just offer a quick thing. So a couple of things I'll share with you. Cuz again, I think there's a number of you that haven't been on the committee the whole loop through from this time last year to this time this year. So there's a couple of things I'll point out. So typically in the fall, for example, in the high school in particular, they talk about class size. They come in and they talk about departments' class size. So that gives you some indication of sort of how big the different classes are. You can kinda see certain, class sizes are really tiny because they're specialized in certain ways, that kinda thing. The other thing is, is, you know, we produce a big thick budget book in January. The last section is the staffing section, which has FTE by kind of cluster. So you can see those FTE, and, and obviously within the, the line-by-line aspect of that as well, there's typically an FTE as well demonstrated there. So you can see for each department sort of what its size is, which is why math always looks weird, because we use the school choice and makes the costs. And you're like, wait, these eight people only cost us three hundred thousand dollars, and these eight people in, in English cost us five hundred thousand dollars. Why is that? Well, because we use two hundred thousand dollars in school choice, that kinda thing. And there's ways to represent that better, but, but, um, those FTEs with departments are there. And so, uh, and one of the things I try to do, I generally don't end December because the numbers are just so rough at that point as far as what we think of state. And we don't have real good numbers for our health insurance and that sort of stuff. So we try to pick, uh, and project i- in, in a very broad way, but in a way that, that is, um, not too far from where we think we'll, we'll be. But, but certainly, uh, you know, in February when we, we met at the four towns meeting, you know, we had FTEs associated. We didn't have them named as far as social studies or science or math or whatever, or language. But we did have an FTE estimate there, and, and I don't think I did in December. Uh, and partly because, again, we, we hadn't gone through the process of looking at like, are there central office reductions? Are there some things, you know, in December we get that, um, you know, the sabbatical request? You know, we put a number in, we find out by the end of December whether someone wants to, to take advantage of that. There's thirty thousand dollars, right? That's a half a person, a little less than a half. So there's, you know, those things, um, you know, and there's evolving, you know, depending on who the students are. You know, if we have a class that has a large number of students with one-on-one, uh, uh, paraeducator support, and the incoming seventh grade has a lot less, we suddenly can have a natural drop, not even less students, but less demand for, for that. You know, you have five of those staff, there's, there's a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars right there. So, so there's some things like that that also play in that are hard to, to do. But I think you're, you know, that sort of order of magnitude conversation around, around budgets is, is a pretty critical one and ways to think about it, and ways for you guys to think about it too, and, and talk about it and say, wow, this is a, this is a big number. And I think that was one thing I was struck by in, in both the December and the February four towns meeting is, is there's oftentimes multiple people that sort of recognize, ooh, that's a big number. That's a really impact on what we offer. You know, I've been in those meetings years ago as a finance committee member before I worked for schools, where someone saw a number like that and went, well, what's the impact? You know, maybe we want to, it was like a finance committee member from one of the towns said, wow, that's gonna have a real impact on what you offer to kids. Can we have a conversation about whether we, as four communities, can, can offer more funding? So those are, those are conversations that everybody's got a responsibility to kind of understand, think about, and, and, and have dialogue about. But I think, yeah, metrics for how to think about it is important.
Sarah?
I know there's a motion on the floor, so maybe this could be a friendly amendment, or, I don't, I, according to, what Doug says, that there's already, there's discussions underway on the sort of strategic planning front, if I understood him, right? So, so I would propose that we just, we organize these two committees, our budget, existing budget and audit committee, and what you call it, revenue committee or advocacy, whatever, just for that next year. Let's just get through the next year. We'll let, you know, the admins be doing their strategic thinking, planning. The superintendent will come in, and I'm sure she'll want us to get to work on that and having a district improvement plan, strategic plan. And let's just focus on next year.
So, I'll go ahead.
I just wanted to say that we have eight employees in the district that are named Smith or Thompson.
Not you.
And I agree that, I think that would be a good way of approaching it because without the new superintendent here doing strategic planning seems not right yet.
Okay, so I was just gonna say, can we just, I'm hearing maybe school fiscal sustainability committee, where we focus on financial or cost proposals, any curricular financial gains and any sort of revenue generation. So we could be like on the, how do we bring money inside? Well, you guys are on the, heck, there's no money, what are we gonna, what's the budget gonna look like side? Does that make sense?
Can I respond?
Sure. Cuz we already, we already have a committee, the bud-, the budget committee, I mean, our budgets are mostly about controlling expenses, not revenue. So I think the budget committee or subcommittee, whatever it is, can be focusing on the expense side. And if you wanna call it sustainability, okay, but just, you find the money. You know, you, you figure out what you can do to get more money.
Sustainability, how can we bring in revenue, basically?
Right, but leave the cost, but really just split the.
Yeah, that works for me, if it works for, worked for Jennifer, worked for me, so what else?
I was just gonna say, can the subcommittees have members from outside of the school committee? Or is that only the advisory committees? And if it's an advisory committee, I would say task it as an advisory committee, cuz it doesn't have to have community members, but it could.
I think it's way too soon to.
It could expand into that, is what I'm saying, as an advisory committee.
So.
There may be experts that are beyond us that could really do better advising, and then they could automatically be put onto that advisory committee if we open it up as an advisory committee instead of having even a third committee.
So I, trying to think this through, right? So I think, um, I like the idea of the two committees and dividing and conquering. I think there's too much work for any one subcommittee to take, take on. When I was thinking about it, I was thinking more about the budget and audit subcommittee as a, right now, right? The FY twenty-five, and then the budget sustainability as more future, which I also think focuses on revenue, right? So both are true for that side. And I, I think for right now, um, that they should just be subcommittees. And if at some point we want to alter that to be an advisory committee, I think that's fine. But I also think we sh- like, Dr. Herman starts in three weeks. So I'd like to have something for us to work with, but I don't want us to get too far ahead of ourselves. Because, you know, she is the captain of the ship. So I think having her input, um, and, and expertise is going to be really helpful. So that was my thinking on it.
So procedurally, what, do you wanna recap, withdraw your motion and have a new motion, or?
I, I mean, I think what we've got.
It's a big friendly motion.
It's a school fiscal sustainability committee, not yet advisory, or not advisory yet, right? Where we're looking at financial or cost proposals that could increase revenue for the school, right? Like, it's sort of simple and I can, you know, like, just really simple. We wanna increase revenues. And then within the committee, maybe we'll, we'll say like, oh, I'm gonna focus on looking at the, the infrastructure stuff, and Jennifer's gonna focus on what two and a half would look like, and Deb's gonna keep pressing everybody on the state. I mean, that's sort of how we're working right now, so if we make it official, it's just a, you know.
Uh, Sarah?
Can I, could, could I ask you to remove the word cost, though? From that, because then that sounds like you're also doing expenses, and if you're focused, if what you're, okay, just. Yep. Make me it clear for my brain.
Um, okay. Do you have your motion as amended?
I think so. I'm just finishing that.
No, no, perfect. Um, I, I, given that, uh, we're short two members today, I don't think we should populate this committee. So they have opportunity to part, willfully partake or, or, or opt out. Uh, William?
I was just gonna say, I think you as a chair can populate it yourself.
I can. However, I do think, these are big asks, right? And so I, I don't think just assigning someone, and like Jennifer said before, like, she has a specific interest in this piece, and so I think you should go where your passions are, right? Like, if that's the piece that you have feelings about, that's where you should go, cuz those are where your feelings are. So I think we can do a better job at that, um, when there's more of us to have the, the conversation. But Tillman?
You could collect names of volunteers now and also ask the other, the missing two members, and then make a decision. Hypothetically, I, I only hear that two people who are present are interested in it. There's two people who are absent who could be interested, which would give you a maximum size of four, which still would meet the criteria, so.
Just talk about which ones were interested in, that's fine.
And not to do hearsay, but one thing that I did hear from Deb Leonard really recently is that she wants to keep working on the state pieces, and so, I mean, I think I was.
She's had a lot of energy there. It's been fantastic, but.
And it'd be great to put that within a.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Final motion. Do you have your?
Yeah, so, um, I move that we create a school fiscal sustainability committee to focus on rever- rev- revenue generating proposals. I think we could just say that, right?
Second.
Do we need to say how many people? I'm sorry.
I don't think we have to.
The subcommittee, right, so it can't be more than four.
So it's just less than four, or four or less. Was that, did you second that, Jen?
Apparently Tillman had already seconded it.
No, the previous, we, we have a previous motion on the table that was seconded. I thought this was just a revision of that motion, but if it's a new motion, we need to dispose of the previous one.
I think it's, I think it's the same motion. We've just friendly amended it to add simplicity and clarity.
You seconded, seconded the friendly amendment.
I think I did.
I didn't do anything.
Okay.
I think that was me. Okay. Okay, all those in favor of creating a school fiscal sustainability subcommittee to focus on revenue? Five, six, seven, eight, excellent.
Can I ask one follow-up?
Yep.
Does the existing budget, are, are, have we also, through this discussion, basically charged the budget and audit committee to start working on the expense side in some way? At least developing, thinking through the process more clearly, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Well, I guess the three of us could just decide.
Decide that.
Just decide the date.
Okay. Great. Thank you for all of that discussion. I feel like that was important and first to have. Um, okay. So update on the bullying harassment process and responses?
Yeah, so I think we talked about this during the goals quite a bit. Uh, you know, the most recent data I have is, is included in the, in the artifacts. Like I reported, the, the high school, I think, is resolved, uh, the, the, uh, the unresolved, I think it was six, that we're showing on the, on theirs. Uh, I think the middle school still in process. I'm not as certain of the number that they have, but I think it's less than what's showing there of nine. I think it is. So I, um, and I, you know, we talked a fair amount about this, so I don't wanna take any more time unless people have other questions that they have relative to this.
Great.
I was just gonna say, just in future, do we wanna have, like, trying to think out of phrases. So I personally filed a DESI complaint. So then that would be a continuation of, of these. Do we know how many, like, DESI complaints from the bullying harassments that we have? Through the PRS, I think it's called the PRS system, complaint system?
Yeah, which is problem resolution system, which the PRS stand for. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but you could get that.
Okay, I was just curious, cuz I think it's related to the same thing.
We can also get PRSs about really kind of anything. So they're not specifically to this. I mean, you can, you can use that system for any conflict resolution, you know, that you feel like you're not getting addressed, so the state has that, that mechanism. So, you know, we would distinguish the ones that particularly relate to this, not just all PRS sort of complaints, but.
Just cuz when I look at this form and it says not bullying harassment, then I assume it's kind of all wrapped up and tied up. And in process means it's still in process, but I feel like there's probably more than, say, the high school fifteen that's not bullying harassment. It's probably still in flux. Or still had, those kids are still probably having issues. There's still probably some safety concerns. There's still, you know, things that are ongoing.
Right, I think that the thing to keep in mind, yeah, when it says that, you know, the resolved or, or whether it be found as bullying or not, I mean, the, the action steps that we take could be persistent perhaps for the whole of the remaining of the year. So, you know, that's just, you know, kind of, we've, we've done the investigatory work, we've sort of made a determination, and that sort of formal process is, uh, as far as recording it, has put, has been, has come to an end. The actual sort of action steps we take with students relative to consequences or, or repair work, or, or whatever, or safety plans, or that is, is, you know, ongoing, dependent upon what's found. And, and, and again, regardless of whether it's a bullying or not a bullying, sometimes there are, there are ongoing and persistent, uh, work relative to that. So that would be a much trickier thing to sort of put a, put a number to, or to think about, and, and sort of what is, you know, what's finished, right? Is, is, I mean, some things are very clean and they, they're done and they're done, right? And then there's others that are much more longstanding in the, in the, in the work that goes with them. So, um, this is really more about that sort of formal process of investigating and finishing that investigation process and reporting out on that particular piece. Like I said, the sort of outcomes and, and actions that we take can, can persist for any length of time that's necessary and appropriate.
And my last comment is, I would really suggest, next time we see this form, to have bullying and harassment teased out separately. And it might be also interesting to have, I, I know that I've heard in several other meetings that we do have some reports that are made that are just kind of frivolous to try to get attention. They're not even credible at all. So, you know, how many of the reports are fake reports, like, have no merit at all?
Yeah, I think.
For another column, does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Because I, I feel like a lot of these that don't, aren't bullying are probably harassment, cuz harassment seems to be more singular, um, time that it happens. And so I just really have a hard time understanding how we can say that, you know, twenty-eight kids in the high school, or twenty-eight individuals really felt that they. Or twenty-eight individuals really felt that they needed to fill out this report and that only seven of them had merit. And it, and fifteen didn't. When I look at this report and I just, I just find that. Difficult to understand, and if I was a kid that had one of those that wasn't found bullying. It was probably harassment, it was probably a singular, you know, kind of, kind of thing, and so these, these reports are just not, um. Not authentic and not really honoring, I think, what some of the kids go through.
I would say it probably wasn't intended to and.
Right.
And I, I don't dis- and I don't disagree with that analysis, I think that, I, I, I think this. The, um. I don't know that we want to make a judgment about whether something was, was frivolous or not, because I think that for, for those that are reporting, that probably none of them feel it's frivolous and.
Well, no, I, I've heard from staff that they have, people, kids have filed them because they want to prove a point to their parents, or they want to, you know, try to blackball a student. Just, and, and so I, I, I have heard, I don't, I've never seen one, but I have heard from staff that there are sometimes reports that are filed that are very, like.
Well, they're bad faith.
They're, they're just not, like, they're not.
Serious.
They're not ser- right, there, there's nothing, they're doing it just to do it.
Right, and the sample size is small enough that that, you know, i- if you had a sample size of a thousand, a couple of those is noise, it's not consequential, but when you have thirty, one or two of those is a big deal percentage wise, right? So, and, and again.
Well, it's in our policies to have also to, if a kid files a frivolous report, they can be held accountable to that, so there is some disciplinary actions that could be happening.
Right, I think that's.
For the kids that are filing ones that aren't real.
Right, so that could be, it, it could still be found from a bullying report standpoint, you know, sort of meeting the criteria, whether bullying harassment doesn't, both of those have a, you know, very. Constrictive and constrained and, and defined sort of measure. Um, yeah, the outcome may be that it was a falsified report and therefore the consequences and the actions are really about the kid that reported erroneously. Um, that can be part of what, what is, is an outcome, that doesn't mean it was necessarily. Uh, a- and so it does overstate the number. I, I think that's the hard thing, is that, that, yeah, there are cases where it's not really, and, and, and there's a lot of them that are in sort of shades of gray, right? And we, we make a determination, it is, it isn't, that's a, that's a binary choice. And yet, you know, the actual sort of discipline and action steps we take are, are. Cognizant of that full shade of gray experience that happens, whether it be frivolous or, or full-blown bullying. We're taking action as, as best and as appropriately as we can, and so, yeah, if a kid falsifies that report. Statistically on that report is gonna show up the way it does, it's like, it got reported, it was found as not bullying, and, you know, from a consequent standpoint, if, if it was something where that was, you know. Intended to, to, to cause other harm, that sort of should be discovered in the process and also dealt with, with consequences appropriately, so I think that's. That's the piece that we're kind of blind to in this, it's a simple sort of stat, you know, it's just a headcount of these kind of things. And we know there's weakness in how that reporting works and, and, and I think that. Um, you know. To do something more sophisticated with the reporting is gonna be harder to do and not get into areas of, of. Um, you know, student records or identifiable information or things like that that start to become, um. You know, not appropriate for public conversation, I mean, I think that's the worry in some respects, is if we wanted to get to something more subtle with the, with the context. It would be tricky to do well to you guys and, and, and not have it be identifiable in, in some respects, so I think that's the concern, I think that, but I, I take the point, you know.
Well, because I, I was told that one reason why they were trying to put in the bullying intervention plan not to have to investigate every report that was filed. Is because they have frivolous reports, and so they don't need to investigate them because they know they're frivolous. That would be nice to have in here, like, if, if it is that substantial to where staff don't feel like they have to investigate every report that's turned in. Then it has to be kind of a substantial number, I mean, and so we should see that reflected.
Right, and it, that's not in the plan at present, so at present, we have to investigate them all, you know, sort of fully. Um, if we, if we get to a place where we make that determination. Um, which is a tricky thing to do too, I would say, because it, it, it. Uh, is making a judgment based on much more superficial information, because it's, you know. And, so, you know, what's the right threshold to make that choice on the front end? Um, so we want to be thoughtful about that as well, if, if we get to a place where that's an option, then yeah, that would be something we could report on as well, I think, is. And, and I think that, yeah, the struggle with this, you know, this is an oversimplified report, so there's a lot of nuance here that's, it's just not there. Um, but I'll, I'll take this conversation back to, to Fay and Brady and, and Doreen Reed and talk to them a little bit about it and, and think about, is there other ways we can kind of? Um, think about the capture of data and what we can share and, and what are the. Best ways to present useful things to you about it.
Thank you, Doug.
Uh, Jennifer?
Um, so, Doug, I know you don't, you're, you're not the one who does the investigations, but, like, is the, is the. The fact that we've had seventy-six total. Investigations finalized and fifty-eight of them were found not bullying harassment, that's like seventy-five percent. Is that the kind of, is it like this innocent until proven guilty concept where, like, if a report of bullying was made, but they couldn't find anyone to corroborate, or they couldn't find any evidence, or they just couldn't, like, they couldn't. Get any confirmation, then is it then found to be not bullying and harassment? Because sometimes, like, kids don't want to. Talk, or there's no evid- there's no, there's no evidence for, like, there could have, something could have happened, but if no one witnessed it, or if the witnesses won't say, or whatever, i- is it then found to be not bullying harassment?
I think that's a sort of case by case basis on what, what there is, um, you know, there, there are often, um, you know, I think that's part of the approach and the subtlety and the hard part of the work is to, to have those conversations with kids about it and, and. Um, you know. We're, we're gonna believe kids, you know, whether they're the reporter or the, or the, you know, or was, you know, uh, someone who's accused, so we're gonna think in terms of being fair to all parties involved. And regardless of, of what we can glean from it or not, sometimes, I'm sure, if we just don't have any reliable information, we might find it's not bullying, and that doesn't mean we still don't. Uh, put together a plan of safety for, for a given kid or, or think about and, and, you know, keep a closer watch on that, that interaction between those students and, and think about how to, uh, guarantee it doesn't happen.
So, okay, that makes sense, so I guess my next question is, when the, when, uh, when a not bullying harassment finding is finalized. Um, is it expressed as this was not bullying and harassment, or is it expressed as there was no finding of bullying harassment, you know what I mean, like? It's a, it's a subtle difference, but if you submitted a report that you were bullied and then you're told, no, no, that wasn't bullying, that was not bullying, or are you told? There was no, you know what I mean, like, there was no finding of bullying or there was no?
Yeah, I think the, you know, the letter that we've sort of. Is fairly. Um. Direct in its, in its context, it does say it was not found to be bullying, it, it does, and, and so th- that is how people interpret it, regardless of what the words on the page says, sometimes they're like. But it absolutely was, it's like, well, but, you know, these are the criteria we use, we didn't set the criteria, here's what we're looking at. Um, and that's part of the communication that we have to do with, with, whether it be parents or kids about that, and so that's part of the, the more subtle follow-up that's not necessarily in the text that we have, you know, for documentation, but that's a critical component of, of, of the, the conversation. Um, you know, folks will get fixated on the term and we, we try to. Talk about the, let's talk about what are the outcomes, what are the consequences, what are the things, I mean, it may be, you know, and again, we want to, we want to be thinking about the action and not, not labeling a student as something and labeling the action as something. Um, and that's not to diminish it, but also just to kind of place the focus where, where it needs to lie. Um, but I think it's a critical part of the conversation, the, the, the formal letter itself is, is pretty. You know, this was not found to be bullying as defined by Mass General law, blah, 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 which, once you get to the Mass General law part, people.
Yeah.
Don't process that, which I understand, I, I don't either, I read a lot of things that say Mass General law, blah, 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 and I, I go, oh, okay, it's in the law, blah, blah, you know, and. So it, 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 it has more of a legal construct than is typically the case, and so that's why, you know, you sort of send that and there's that, that dialogue with, whether it be families or kids about, about. Um, what else is going on in this circumstance that we're really, you know, what are, what action steps are we taking with those students? Um, you know, either to promote safety, better behaviors, whatever it happens to be, so I think that's the thing. Um, we try to do there.
Bridgette?
So, I'm thinking about from the staff handbook, the staff training, that type of perspective. What type of guidance are you giving people in terms of, uh, directive, in terms of the timeline, that an instance of bullying needs to be turned around on? And you were saying some people were and some people weren't, and I'm wondering if in a circumstance like this, it's more effective to have a team than just one person? Since it seems like maybe there's some gaps in follow-through?
Um, there's some aspects of this that are directive by the state. Um, so like, you know, the determination has to be made by the principal. Period. Like, that's, you know, the investigation can happen by a dean.
That's not true. Determination can actually happen.
Oh, you're right.
By a panel, it's determined.
Right.
The determination of responsibility is determined by how, whoever the district decides is to do.
Right, I'm sorry, you're correct, I'm.
The way the district currently has done.
Right, that's, that's where I confused it.
It doesn't have to be that.
Right, it doesn't have to be. Um. You know, as far as, um. Uh, you know, directives with staff, I, I, I think the, the very first thing we want people to do relative to receiving these reports. Is to look at them and to take action relative to a safety plan, so if, if there's a need to intercede in some way with the kids that are involved. Um, we want to sort of insert ourselves at that fundamental level first and foremost as quickly as possible. Um, do we always do that as quickly as we should? Probably not, and.
What's the timeline, though? Like, what do you require?
Literally, it, it could be the same day, it depends, I mean, there, you know, it, it, it depends on what it is and it's as quickly as people can, can get to it, and so. Um, you know, there, there are circumstances that are much higher, um, you know, promote a higher level of concern depending on what's reported as far as immediacy. Um, you know, what I would like to see is that, you know, by literally the sort of, you know, if, if that, you know, if that was put in at six o'clock at night, that sometime during that next day, there's, there's an immediate sort of. Review and, and starting of the process, now whether or not we're getting to the actual formal sort of steps or not, I don't know. Do we do that? No, we don't, I wish we did, I really do. Um. But it's dependent on a lot of different things and, you know, there, there are a host of, you know. Um, there are a number of people that receive those and, and should be taking action as quickly as we possibly can, and there are things, you know, if we get a report on Friday night. December twenty-first and we don't have school for two weeks. There's gonna be a delay until we get back to that. Those kids might interact outside of school, that's a hard place to be. Um, you know, there, there are constraints that are really tricky here and, and, you know, I, I think the directive to staff is to not delay in any way, shape or form. Um, and, and to, uh, to take some level of action as quickly as possible, which is literally, you know, I mean, I think. It would be the next day, literally the next day, or during the same day, I mean, if you see it at ten in the morning, I mean, you know, and you can take action during that school day, you've got to see it to do something about it. Um. Uh, and, and you've got to be able to, to, uh, you know, communicate and connect, uh, with, with the, with the kids involved. Um. And, and. You know, and, and again, depending on what's reported, it's, you know, there, there are differing levels of severity there, you know. Um. That, that create a, a different level of urgency, and that's not to diminish, you know, the urgency on any of this, I don't, I don't want to say that at all. Um. But, you know, I, I think we could be better and, and we should get better, and, you know. We always want to be as responsive as quickly as we can regardless.
I'd just like to see something really clear and direct with a timeline, because every day it's a kid who may not be available for time on learning.
Yeah.
Or who's feeling stressed for two weeks over the holiday.
The directive is, is immediately. That's a directive, really, and, and whether or not they can or can't, the, the intention is, and the expectation is, that as soon as these come up, that there's someone looking at it. And investigating whether they, they need to take some action step with regard to keeping a kid safe or not. There's, you know, sometimes somebody will report something, it was about a month ago, well, it's hard to, you know, the urgency's not necessarily quite there, depending on what it was and where it was and when, you know, there's circumstances, but. When these come in, the intention is that, that, uh, there's immediate response to that in some way, shape or form to either take an action step. In some way to, to, not necessarily full investigation, that takes a lot longer, you gotta, you know, sort of schedule time to meet and talk to students, interview people and all that sort of stuff. But as far as a safety plan for students, that we want to try to take action on as, as, as quickly as we can, which is essentially immediately, would be the, you know, the, the directive to staff.
And that's somewhere in writing, like, they all see it and know that?
I, we've said it to them, I don't know how many times this year, I don't know if we've got it written in a particular thing or not, uh, you know, there, there's, I've seen plenty of emails that have gone between, you know.
That's great.
You know, directors and principals around the topic of, of getting to it. Um, with urgency.
Excellent. Okay. Highlights.
Super news update, so first of all, it was Stephanie Joyce, I've recalled her last name. I am going to apologize profusely to Stephanie, I've known Stephanie for the entire time I've worked in the district. A colleague of mine texted me and I was like, oh, that's right, Stephanie Joyce, so Stephanie, I'm very sorry that I forgot your last name. Um, so, um, I will, there's a few things that are listed here, so, uh, Sarah Best has already talked about the, the, um, the art HS, uh, exhibit at Amherst College, that's a, you know, phenomenal thing, if you get an opportunity to go to that. Uh, some tremendous, uh, artwork that students have done. Um. Uh. I wanted to take a second and talk about, um. We had graduation last week, that's pretty awesome, um, different venue this year, um, you know, the, the Mullen Center is nice, it's very, very large, it has a bit of a, a. In my opinion, a bit of a cavernous feel. Um. Because it is so large. Um. It's also pretty expensive. Um, and I think that we, we have done graduation, as, as Principal Siddique, who's a graduate of our high school, said, you know, I had a class of three hundred and we graduated in this same space, now. How many people come to graduations different than it used to be, a lot more folks, you know, come to that? I think we did a pretty good job, I haven't heard, you know, I haven't had a chance to sort of debrief with high school about, about that, I think, you know, we'll get better at this sort of ticket question. Um. The multiplier in cost difference is like two and a half, it's a really significant difference in price. Um, and I think the space was, was pretty decent.
Revenue committee.
So it, you know, um. So it, it was a nice, uh, I thought it was a nice event, you know, there's live streaming, which is, gives options to folks, um, you know, my wife actually wanted to go, she knew some kids, um, she watched from home with some other people, they had a good time. Um, so I think there's, there, it, it's a possibility of potentially carrying on in the future, but I'll, I'll check in with the high school and see, uh, what their thoughts were about how it went and, 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 uh. You know, what things they can, uh, consider for next, next time. Um. And, and I can't remember when we last met, but the summit graduation was on May thirty-first, which was also an extraordinarily lovely event. Um, and if you ever get a chance to go to that graduation, that's really awesome as well, it's a very, very different event, it's very small, but very personalized, and it's, it's really. A testament to that program and, and, and the work that those staff do in that program, as well as the graduates who do the work to actually earn the diploma. Um, uh, I also want to note, uh, we had some track athletes that qualified for, uh, the nationals in track, which is pretty phenomenal, and so, um, you know, our, our, our hearty congratulations to them and their success this year and. And, uh, wishing them the best in that regard. Um.
They're going to Oregon, right?
Yes, it's in Oregon, so it's, it's quite a trip, there was a fair amount of quick fundraising to help support that, uh, that trip. Um. I don't have a roster of retirees, but I did want to take a moment and thank our retirees, we have several that are, that are, uh, coming in and I wanted to take a moment just to say this, whether we'll get an opportunity at our next meeting to do that or not, or to have a fuller list of retirees. It's a number of people across all our districts, um, who've served us well for a long time and are making the choice to, to retire, and we wish them nothing but the best, and we really thank them deeply. For their service to us regardless of how long it was, whether it was a few years or a lot of years. Um, uh, they will be missed and, and. And, uh, you know, they're welcome back at any time to help us out. Uh, and, and we'll hopefully tap into that a little bit.
No question.
And so, let's see, those things, and then, uh, so, uh, I was at the finance committee today. Uh, where they were discussing the track and fields project a little bit. Um. I think everybody's motivated to do a north-south orientation, I think the town of Amherst is less inclined, well, some of the people are less inclined to use any. Um. Uh, reserves, uh, to support that, but they felt that there was, um. Opportunities to, to explore CPA funding, I think there's also opportunity, this is some ongoing conversations we've had with the designer about. Aspects of the project that we might be able to, to do in a, in a, what they call an add alternate form, so we can put it into the design and put it into the. To the bidding documents as a, what's called an add alternate designer to sort of bring the cost of reorienting more in line with the funding level we have in hand. And then have those other things be, um, funded. And then have those other things be, um, funded by potentially other later, um, uh. Appropriated funds, whether it be from CPA or some other source or fundraising or whatever. Um, so I think we can, we can get pretty close, I guess, is the short story. I mean, we've, we've gotta look at what those, those options are. That'll be a little bit of a conversation with our designers to say, well, you know, which of these have more. Wiggle room versus not in an add alternate circumstance. Um, you know, there was like. For example, the, the shot put was designed as a double sort of. Orient, you know, sort of shot put from either end. He said, well, we, we could make that just a one-sided version of that. That's a reduction in cost. That might be a direction we wanna go regardless because that's just, you know, I don't think we're gonna have meat so big that we need it, but, you know, that level. Same with the long jump, uh, triple jump. Um, if you do a double-ended that, you can run those events simultaneously. You know, we may have to decide that that's not a level of, of sophistication. So there's things like that we can do to kinda shave a little more out. That we may never put back in or have as these add alternates. So I think we can get pretty close and. And we have to recognize what, what we actually get. So like if we, you know, shave the project to the point where it fits within the funding we have. If that other funding doesn't come, we gotta be okay with what that looks like. Um, but it also is, is structured in a way that if. You know, it is a much more constrained. In product. But it has, you know, but it's also, I think, also structured in a way that adding some of those things back over time is also a possibility. So adding lights later. So for example, the lights that are currently at those, at the field, you know, the field was there a long, long time before those lights got put in. Cause, you know, fundraising was done and those lights were added much later. So there's ways to do that. It, it has complications and impacts. If we don't have lights on those, the, the, you know, it changes your playable hours and your ability to schedule stuff and all sorts of things. So those are all considerations as we go through this. But, but I think we can. There are a couple avenues to explore relative to that.
Tillman?
Yeah, thanks for, um, explaining the, the process. Are we voting on the directive to the designers at the next meeting? I be, I believe we, there was some urgency to at least give directions on what to design more carefully by the end of June.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it probably can be done by consensus to some extent. We may not have enough, you know, but I think if, if. Uh, and I think this is a bit of an interim process with, you know, with, with the designers a little bit about, all right, what are the things that. Kind of fall in this category of an add alternate? What makes some sense? Um, can we get to a, you know, a number that. It fits what we know we have in hand for, for resource. Um, if that seems viable, we can bring that back to the committee. At the next meeting and you guys can, can formally say, yes, please go ahead with the north-south design, you know, um. The, the town council will vote on the seventeenth. If they don't remove restrictions, um, we're somewhat compelled if, to either do. The simplest version or to do the other one. So we have to, to do the north-south reorientation. Because to use the, you know, the funding that gets us up to three point four or so million. May require us to do a north-south orientation, so.
May I follow?
Yep.
My, my point is that, yes, we, by the next meeting, we will know that information. And I think we should have that on the agenda to. Decide like what, what we're telling the designers to do. I also wanna quickly report that I presented this to Leverett Select Board. And, um, it wasn't clear that there was a process around the schedule of the CPA funding, which is very slow. So. The only help that Leverett could provide would be much later. Um, but the, the community input at the meeting was that. There was a sense that we wanna make sure that we do it right and not just cheat.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I will say that when I last spoke to Leverett regarding CPA, you know. More specific design was one concern and, 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 uh, in the other was about, you know. Conversation about the surface of the field, you know, and, and, um, I think that's been true in, in all of the communities when talking to CPAs. The more specific the product we're trying to ask funding for, the, the better. That gives them much more confidence like, oh, this is what we're buying with this money. It's not. Too nebulous.
And, and let me say surface just for clarification. It, it's grass.
Right.
They just wanna make sure that it's the re, with proper drainage.
Right.
It wasn't about the material of the surface. It was about the, the.
Just to say that I think that even in two weeks and whatever council can do before then. If we decide to proceed with, tell the designer, go for the reorientation, it's still a, um. We, we, we still need to do the work of applying for more CPA, CPA money. So it's a little bit of a gamble. I mean, there's a little bit of risk because we won't have all the money in two weeks, but we might have it in four months, right? So.
Yeah.
Bridget?
So I just wanna see if I understand, cause I feel like I lost something somewhere. I've got, we have one point seven million in hand right now, which could do one B. This, the committee today recommended, and the CPA committee recommended to add eight hundred thousand back. Or to take the restrictions off the eight hundred thousand. So that takes up up to two point five million. Does that cover anything?
There's another nine hundred thousand in free cash that's solely under the control of the.
I'm, right, right.
So.
I'm, wait, just give me one second, cause I'm trying to understand. So, but the free cash. They, the finance committee voted against using it unless we reorient it. But if we get it back and, and they say yes, that's three point four million. Does that get us to three C?
That's where the idea of taking some aspects of the project. It, so if you look at the details of the four point two, three million and you look at the line items on that. There are certain line items that could be what they call add alternates. In other words, they could be pulled out from the, from the base. Uh, request for bids and be additional alternates that could be added in as a, as a change if funding was available.
Okay, I just wanna be clear, cause like, maybe my numbers are wrong, but I think that's three quarters of a million dollars to get to three C still. Is that correct?
Right.
And do you think there's that much value engineering or that much community goodwill? Is that?
That's what we've got.
Roll of the dice?
That's what we've gotta look at a little more closely. I mean, like I said, the lighting's five hundred thousand.
All right, so I did understand.
And then there's some other pieces that we might be able to do. So there's a, you know, conversation about fencing and, you know, there were a lot of different pieces. So we gotta. That's where we gotta talk to the designers a little bit to parse out those, um, pieces and see if we can get to that number of, of seven fifty.
Cause they said they needed to know by the end of June whether we had the money in hand or not, right? Did they misunderstand?
We just have to tell them which to do. It's, it's our gamble whether we have the money.
There's also, if it's, it can't go.
Right, right.
But if you have the, you have your base project and then you can have the add alternate. So if we, we have to do this. And then if we have this much money, we can add this in. And then if we have this much money, we can add this back in.
Okay.
So like, it's, I don't, from a construction standpoint, I don't see any problem with it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think the key thing for the designers to have the direction, literally and figuratively, from us. For them to do the design, cause it sets in motion for them, the kind of permitting that they need to go through and that process that they need to go through. And that doesn't change whether we put lights on or don't put lights on, or we put a fence in or we don't put a fence in. Cause that reorientation, what physical space is being used, how it drains, where the track sits, how it drains, all that stuff is, is, is. Is what they need to start with and that's what drives their permitting process and that they can know. And then when we get to bidding, then we can get more nuanced with. Sort of different funding levels and what we can actually buy with what we've got.
And do the CPA funds alone get us to one D?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, not really. We need, we really kinda need both of those to get there. It doesn't quite get us there. So one other super news update. So talking about new superintendent onboarding, I had a nice conversation, uh, with, with Dr. Herman. Uh, last week, uh, Debbie Westmoreland and I met. We talked about a variety of things. Um, in getting ready to, you know, get her started and, and getting her off on, on a, on a, uh, trajectory of success. And, and, uh, you know, there are a few things we're putting together internally to prepare that, that we can do. She's set, scheduling meetings with, with directors and principals over the first few weeks to have conversations. Um, we'll be putting some, some, you know, sort of contact stuff together for her to, you know, and, and doing introductions with folks, that kinda thing. So, so we've started that process and, and we're, you know, there's a piece of this that she's gotta be a real participant in and wants to be a real participant in. And also understands what we know and, and is, is, um, you know, appreciative and interested in what we have to share. And we're thinking about sort of structured ways to do this, uh, that makes some sense. And she's, she's got some ideas about that as well. So we're, we're well in process. And we're gonna continue to, to sort of build that, that, that initial piece together. Um, the. MAS S, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, um, has their annual meeting. Uh, the third week of July, it's like the fifteenth is, I think, the Monday. So she's gonna be out that week going to that. Um, that's an opportunity for her to, to do some, some professional development, make some contacts, um, uh, et cetera, et cetera with that. Or, you know, professional statewide organization. So she'll be, she'll be out that week. But, but we're, we're putting plans in and working with her on. On what she wants and what she needs to be successful. And we're, you know, sharing, uh, you know, contacts and, and, and putting some pieces in place. Um, with regard to, to that. Um, I think there's some interest in, you know, maybe some community type events. Um, you know, one thing that we typically do and I think we will do, I didn't get a chance, like I said, Miss Westmoreland was out today and so I didn't get a chance to double check. We typically, before the first day of school, have a first day event, uh, which is a community-wide event, oftentimes focused on the younger kids, but it's really for anybody. That's obviously an, an opportunity for the, for the new superintendent to kinda meet the, the, the kids and the public and that sort of thing. But, you know, we may also wanna have something sooner than that. I'm open to suggestion and you guys as a committee may wanna think about how to, how you wanna. You know, welcome her to community who, whom should be, you know, sort of in that, in that group of, of folks to meet with her. And, and when, how quickly, um, that sort of thing. But, but just wanted to give you a little update. We're, we're making some progress and making some plans and. Uh, and, and, um, you know, trying to, you know, sort of put some pieces together that, that are, you know. Um, functional, available and, you know, and, and ready for her when she's ready for them. Um, so I think I'll stop there and ask you any questions.
Okay, I have three questions for Doug. Hopefully they'll be quick. First, something I've always wondered about is regarding high school graduation. When I graduated from high school in New York State, graduation was after the last day of school. And so I was surprised to come here and find that graduation is before the last day of school. So if seniors are taking a course that underclass are also taking, they have to like finish their coursework and get their final grades ahead of time. But also, how does that fit with the hundred and eighty days thing?
There's an exception in the law for seniors in high school.
Thank you. Perfect. Okay, next thing. I read in the Gazette that the district, the regional districts receiving six hundred thousand dollars from the EPA's clean school bus program.
Yes, I believe we did get a new award for, I think we just got, um, Rupert was talking about this today. Actually, we did get another, uh, grant for three more electric buses.
Excellent.
It will take, I will dampen expectations around this. So the current program we have. The bus has been on order for about a year and it is now, it was supposed to arrive in May or June. It's now expected to come in November. Or October, November. So the, the wait time on that and also the wait time on infrastructure for like charging. Really long. So we, we're fortunate to get the grant. We're happy to get the grant. We're excited to move in that direction. And it is a trajectory we've been on for a while. Um, and it may be a while before we actually see him. So I wanna make sure people are understanding of that piece of that.
Great, but we have the funds for it. Great. Okay, last question. So I know we're still waiting on the Amherst Town Council to vote on our, but, on the six percent budget. But I did hear that the finance committee recommend, is recommending getting us the six percent via a one-time gift. Um, and so I, I, I know you're probably gonna tell us that you still don't know what cuts are gonna have to be made, but. Most of the public comment we received about the budget cuts was about world languages and restorative justice. Do you yet know if those two programs are gonna be impacted?
Uh, restorative justice will probably still remain a, a, a reduction, cause I think that, that, um. And, and it's, it's a reduction in staff, not in a reduction or, or lack of commitment to restorative justice. So I think it's, we, we need to think about how to approach that differently than we have. Um, I think on world language, I think at the middle school, that's likely to remain in place, uh, as a reduction. Um, you know, cause the implications of what we can put back is, would be. We can't restore all of it and you can't restore part of it. We can't afford to restore all of it and we can't. Logistically restore part of it. The other thing I'll point out, just as a little tidbit of information. Um, so I was talking with, with, um, with some administration about this and, and so. With the proposed change to, to alternate days essentially for two years in the element, uh, in the elementary, in the middle school. The contact hours for that total more than the level one course at the high school. So in the high school, you take a level one course for a semester. It's like, I, I don't wanna quote the hours. It's X number of hours. With the, with the reduction at the, at the, at the middle school level. Doing it for, you know, over seventh grade and eighth grade, the total time on learning in the building. Is still more than what the high school does for their level one class. So as far as ability to learn the language. The total hours with teacher and, and contact, uh, is still more than what, what the high school does as far as the actual, you know, time on learning. So it's, it's, you know, it's actually more difficult to take the level one class at the high school level. It's a faster pace, um, because there's less contact hours in the, in the classroom.
But, okay, but.
It's less time than they have in the current schedule and it's still more than what you have if you were to take level one in the high school level. So you still get to level two if we, if, you know, it, it, it is possible to be at level two in ninth grade. If you take it in seventh, English, you know, a foreign language in both seventh and eighth grade.
Oh, oh, I, I'm, now I'm confused, cause I thought that was the whole, I thought that was the big impact of the cut was that you weren't gonna be able to do that.
That's what was, that was suggested by the teaching staff that came and spoke? The administrators who looked at the schedule, went back and, and tallied it up and, and looked at the sort of hours of contact and. It will be more difficult and, and the pacing will be different. Um, but the hours available for, for instruction are, are still greater at the middle school level. Over a two-year period.
Okay.
Um, so I think it's still, you know, we're able to support kids and be able to get to level two. It's a matter of, you know, pacing the curriculum to, to be at the right place. So that when they get to ninth grade, they can take that level two class.
Thank you. That's good news. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And I think there's still, you know, wrinkles of other things we're working through as far as schedules and, 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 uh. Implications. And, and I think, you know, back to the restorative justice piece and, and the deans, I, you know, I think we, um. Yeah, it's a difficult cut. Uh, it really is. Cause I mean, we like the people that do that work and we like the work that they do. And, and I think that. We have to, um, really be thoughtful about how we approach that and how we. You know, try to implement that in our, in our buildings, uh, moving forward. And I, you know, I think it can be done. It, it won't be the same as what it was. Um, and I think that that's, you know, when we look at some of the other things like ability to, you know, restore guidance staff. You know, it's the high school, support the, the, the guidance and, and, you know, the, the counseling staff at the, the middle school. Um, ways in which we might support, you know, the, the prep academy work and, and those kinda things. It's just, you know, it's, it's a bit of a. Tough choice either way. It's sort of, you know, what's less uncomfortable? They're all uncomfortable, which is a little less uncomfortable. Where can we find other ways to do the work that, that, and think about it differently? It's part of what we're trying to do and plan for.
Okay, uh, last comment and then I, we need to move to our future agenda because we need to go home.
So quickly, two questions. I noticed that there is, um, a job opening for Dean of Students for High School. Um, will there be a hiring committee and would that include community people or school committee members? When they get to the point where they're interviewing?
Typically not for.
Not for dean?
Yeah, not for dean. When we do principals and, and, um, administrators, yes, we tend not to when it's.
Not for a dean level. And then my next question is, is there been a, I know you were gonna be hiring for a middle school principal? What's the status of that?
Um, so we'll, we'll, you know, um, we'll start that this year. During the year, we, we, we have a, a planned place for the coming year. Where we've got an assistant principal position. We're gonna.
That's right, man, the assistant.
Oh, assistant principal. Um, we're in process. I, I don't.
Cause I haven't seen it posted, so I was just curious.
So assistant principal has been posted. I don't know if it's closed or if it's closing soon as far as applications are concerned. We'll take a fairly thoughtful approach. We don't wanna take forever either. So we're gonna try to strike a good balance there and, and try to have somebody in place. But I, you know, I think the idea is that we'll hopefully be able to have something in place, kind of,
Just quickly, who's, is there going to be an interview committee? And will that include community people and school committee members for that position?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. And who will be hiring that position? Is that superintendent? Is that, because there's not a building principal.
Well, there's, there's the interim principal.
The interim, so the interim,
He'll be involved in it. And, and, and I think that the, you know, actually, we're having a conversation with him and, and HR staff today. We were talking about this a little bit, thinking about sort of who and what kind of form the sort of committee to think through. And there's a screening group and then there'll be a, and then there'll be an interview group and we want to be, you know, thoughtful about inclusion of who and what in that. I don't think there's expectation of, of, you know, like I say, school committee or outside for those. That was not my expectation. I could be wrong. So I don't want to say it's not, but if, but it's likely we'll probably do that with, with staff and try to get a variety of, of inputs. It won't, you know, won't be exclusively like all directors or something like that. We're going to have a,
So the interim principal for next year will be the decision maker in that hiring, in that position, or will be the superintendent?
Well, it, some of it's a matter of timing. So if it's before, before Dr. Herman gets here, it'll be this, it'll be the principal. It's technically the principal's choice, much like they do all the teaching staff. And, um, you know, with any new hire of professional staff, the superintendent always does a short interview, uh, as well, a final sort of, you know, sign-off. I've done that with all the, the teaching staff. We've been in hiring and, and interviewing this spring, so there'll be that. So if it happens before the end of June, it'll be me that looks and has a conversation with that person. And then if it's, we don't do that always with an internal candidate, if external candidate, then, then we often do just to, you know, get to know them, answer any questions, get a sense of that. Usually at that point, there's not reason for the superintendent to say no to a, a particular choice. I will say in the history of, of superintendents doing this, that has happened. But it's very, very rare. Usually, you know, recommendation to the committee and then the decision by the, by the principal is usually the sort of primary steps involved. And superintendent does do a final sort of check-in and, and confirmation.
Thank you.
Okay. Future agenda planning. Tillman?
As I said, it's critical that we talk about the track. And I apologize that for the next meeting, I will not be here because I'm at a professional conference in Oregon. And because of the three-hour time difference, there's a session that I'm chairing that overlaps with the school committee. So I kindly ask that we put the track towards the end of the agenda, so I can join remotely by then.
Okay. Sarah?
So that next meeting will be June twenty fifth, yes? That's when we're going to have, I think, a joint meeting with all the committees and, um, hear or present or approve or whatever the summative assessments for that.
I think they are staggered meetings, I guess.
Staggered, well, that evening?
Yeah, one then the other.
Okay, alright. And I felt there was some, already some other things on the agenda.
That's, yeah, I have more things. I think we're going to end up having a fairly full agenda, just because it's the last one for the very end. Okay.
Yeah, there'll be some, you know, we'll do some budget adjustments to close out the year. That'll be one thing we'll do. Trying to think if there's anything else kind of of that sort. There might be one other thing like that that we do.
Maybe the budget, I mean, the twenty-three.
Do we have policy stuff?
We might have the twenty-three audit if it's available for a reason, but.
Well, there's time to, if you think of anything else, send me an email, let me know. Alright.
I move to adjourn the region.
Second.
Excellent. All in favor? You're adjourned.